Welcome to the second meeting here in May. We have a few public hearings that are going to occur this evening, but first, the city clerk.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, held Tuesday, May 15, 2018 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendow.
Present.
Councilmember Mandel is absent. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Aramo.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Corporation Council Robert Agostisi. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Councilwoman Moore, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming this evening. We'll try and move things along, and we'll start off with the city manager's update.
May is Bike Month, so SOBI bikes and SOBI bikes are now ready for use at the train station on the boardwalk. In addition, the new 2018 seasonal plan is now available, allowing you to ride every day through December 1st. Long Beach in the news, along with the recent features spotlighting the city by the sea on Thrillist. This month's Long Island Press has a four-page feature on the many fun and exciting things to do in Long Beach. This past weekend, Newsday released a list of the top five beaches that packed personality, which included Long Beach. And this week's Long Island Business News includes a magazine featuring eight great downtowns. Naturally, Long Beach made that list as well. These accolades join recent articles in The New York Times, Daily News, USA Today, Newsweek, highlighting all of our city has to offer. Beach passes are on sale with the first phase of the Army Corps of Engineers' Project Dunn. All of our beaches will be completely open this summer, and we're looking forward to a wonderful season. With that in mind, 2018 beach passes can be purchased seven days a week at the gazebo building located across from the Long Beach Ice Arena. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9 to 6, and weekend from 9 to 4 until June 22nd. For more information, visit longbeachny.gov/Beach. The farmer's market is back for the season on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 9 to 2 through November 10th. For additional information, visit li greenmarket.org. Cabaret Festival, Artness and Partnership is holding its 16th Annual Cabaret Festival at the Long Beach Library, starting this Thursday, May 17th, and running through Sunday, May 20th. Hands Across the Sand also this Saturday, May 19th at 11:00. You can join the Surf Ride Central Long Island Chapters. They gather for Hands Across the Sand on National Beach. Chamber Home and Garden Show, this Saturday and Sunday, May 19th and 20th. The Long Beach Chamber of Commerce will hold a home and garden show in Kennedy Plaza. For additional details, visit thelongbeachchamber.com. Memorial Day weekend is right around the corner, and finally, our parade will take place on Monday, May 28th. It is led by the Joint Veterans Organization, followed by various community groups. It will step off from Ohio Avenue and West Beach Street at 10:00 AM and will proceed to City Hall for the Memorial Day program. This year's grand marshals are the veterans of the global war on terrorism. The Memorial Day parade and ceremony is dedicated to the remembrance of the men and women who sacrificed their lives in defense of this great nation. We hope to see you there.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Tagney. We'll open up the first hearing.
Okay. Our first public hearing tonight is for a local law amending subpart C of related acts relating to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override the tax levy limit established by General Municipal Law, Section 3(c).
Okay. This is exactly what it says. The tax cap for Long Beach this year is 2.65%. The failure to pierce the tax cap has some very, very serious ramifications, even if an error is made down the road. If you go even just 0.01% over the cap without voting to pierce it, you suffer severe penalties. So it's really a good insurance policy. I truly don't believe you're going to get under 2.65% anyway, but I think it's a good insurance policy to vote to override the tax cap. It doesn't mean you have to override it, it's just the opportunity is there.
Could you explain what happens if we don't override the tax cap and then the 12.36, 12.6 budget goes into effect?
Yes. What happens is if the tax cap is not voted to be pierced and the council does not prepare in a rider sheet that they can pass on their own with a vote, then the city manager's budget automatically goes into practice. What that means is that all the residents will still be charged the 12.36 tax increase. The money will go into escrow and be paid back a year later. So the money will be taken, you will get it a year later, and the city will not be able to use it, and in essence, will punch about a $3 million, $3.7 million hole in the budget.
So if we do pass a budget with an errata sheet, bringing it down, whatever, just anything below the 12%, but don't pierce the tax cap, the same?
The same thing happens.
Same thing happens. Okay. Any other questions from the council?
This is either for Commissioner or the, Christie. What is the actual impact if we, aside from, I understand the procedural aspects, what will happen with the money that's collected if we were not to pass this, but the budget goes into effect, but what's the actual impact on the budget itself? Like, what would it mean for the services provided to our residents as well as to our employees?
You would have a about of almost a $4 million hole in your budget that you would have to correct.
Any other questions from the council? And any questions or comments from the general public? Please just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Lloyd Lester, 72 Boy.
Thank you.
This question is out of, I'm sorry. This question is out of ignorance, not judgment. The fact that the city manager's budget automatically goes into effect, isn't that part of the city charter?
I don't know if it's code or charter.
Charter.
So couldn't that be overridden too? The same way you're overriding the tax cap?
I don't know.
That's a question for, I mean...
Yes.
Overwritten by whom?
Yes, it could be. I don't know about in this timeframe, but yes.
So, I mean, you could do this. I understand, we've been through this before, back in the Lenny Remo days, where nobody voted on the budget and the budget automatically went into effect. I personally think that's a very bad way to operate. I think, you know, in a sense, the council should be forced to come up with the budget, one way or another. Every other business in the world operates that way. So why put ourselves, put our necks on the block with this kind of hammer over our heads where the budget goes automatically into effect? Why not change that part of the charter?
Well, this is about the tax cap, overriding the tax cap. So even if we come down from the city manager's budget and vote to pass a budget, whatever the percentage, if it's over 2.65, we need to override the tax cap. This item is about the tax cap specifically.
Listen, there's no question, I know that, that you're going to override the tax cap. I don't see any other alternative. I mean, let's be honest. But what I'm saying is, you're saying, these are the consequences if we don't and the city manager's budget goes into effect, which automatically means the 12 point, whatever, 4%. And that's a big hammer that causes, you know, that is caused by the, you know, failure to override the tax cap or whatever. I just don't understand why, knowing that, knowing you have that potential, why you don't change that part of the charter? That's an idea.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone else from the public care to speak about the overriding the tax cap?
Yeah, I could.
Come on up, sir. Please just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fitzpatrick. I live in Long Beach. My question is, what ramifications, negative or positive, do we get from the state if we override the tax percentage that you're allowed to override? What happens from the state?
I believe it's nothing, right?
If you do or you don't.
No, the state is the one that makes you put the money into a reserve account. That's it.
That's it. Okay. So there's no, they're not going to take anything away from us or give us anything if we go over the tax amount? Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Please just state your name and address for the record.
Nori Egan. This is not about the tax cap, it's just to ask everybody sitting up here to please speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.[620.45][620.45](APPLAUSE)
Anyone else? I see a hand back here. Please just state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Mona Goodman, Long Beach. So if we pierce the tax cap, won't that have a negative effect on people's STAR rebates?
I don't think it has any impact on that.
Not that I know.
Christie, do you know?
There was two years where New York State had a program called the Local Government Efficiency Program, where if you stayed under the tax cap, your residents and businesses received a rebate of whatever you went above the tax cap. So if somebody's tax bill went up $50 because you raised taxes, but you stayed under the tax cap, they got a check back for that exact $50. That program was just done for two years and it ended actually budget before last. So no, there's no effect on STAR for this budget.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hightower. Anybody else about the tax cap? Come on up, sir.
James Lynch, 16, may walk. I plead ignorance here because I don't see any paperwork over there. Are we going to be discussing the budget tonight or just the tax cap? I walked in late, so I'm just trying to figure out.
We have three...
There's been some pomp and circumstance here, but this thing seems to have started on time.
We have three budget, three public hearings. First, the tax cap, then the capital plan, and then a budget hearing.
Okay. Now, I'll step back and wait for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't lose my opportunity to speak, as I did last week. Thank you.
Anybody else about the tax cap? Okay. Seeing no hands, I'll close the hearing.
Okay.
We'll open up the next hearing, which is for the capital plan.
Our second public hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023.
So there was some confusion about the capital plan. I just wanted to speak to that for a second. So a majority of the council last week decided to pull the capital plan from tonight's meeting. That actually pulled the vote for the meeting, so you'll see on the agenda there is no vote. But since we didn't notice the hearing, we do have to either have the hearing or we have to table the hearing. But since we just got the plan, I think every council member just got the plan now, and the PowerPoint is ready, we'll open the hearing so we have the information both now and in the next council meeting. So we will have two capital plan hearings.
Good evening, everyone. This year's capital budget was a little late put together, only because of all the concerns on the financial position of the city, so that we could determine what level we needed to be at. So we had done several iterations of it. We did complete it last Thursday. My apologies, I forwarded it on Friday, did not realize it did not get forwarded to the council level. The capital plan basically is in three different funds. There's the general fund, which covers, as you can see, roads, drainage, shoreline projects, transportation, public safety, grounds, parks, technology and equipment. We have a sewer fund, which is financed through sewer fees, which takes care of the sewer collection system, the water pollution control plant, and any equipment that we purchase. And the same with the water fund, which is paid for through fees. We have distribution projects, water treatment plant projects, and equipment. The 2018-19 capital budget this year, our goal was to make the, get a point in the budget where we would be low whatever debt came off the books, so that we did not add any new debt to the city. And in order to do this, we took several steps. First, we performed a very comprehensive review of the previously approved projects. There were over 200 projects on the books that some were closed, but still had funds available, and we used those funds, projects that we could finish, say that were complete, we used those funds to pay down debt. So those went back. And they paid debt down based on the length of the project. Can't take $100,000 and pay $100,000, but if it's got payments over the next five years, you could pay $20,000 a year. So I believe this paid down about $100,000 in debt. We looked at carryover funds, projects that are of similar nature, road overlays, complete road projects, things of that nature, so that we could reduce the additional funds that we needed to continue to do projects. This exercise was extremely beneficial in preparing this year's capital budget. It took a lot of time, but it was definitely worthwhile. Normally, we look at various things to do the capital planning. However, this year, because of the situation we're in financially, we only took projects that were time-critical, projects that would reduce operating expense through capital chargeback. Capital chargeback is by using in-house labor on capital projects, we could reduce some of the operating budget cost. And any projects that included funding from various grants or FEMA and had significant importance to the city and its future, and anything that had a safety issue. Projects in years 2019 to '20 and '22, '23 are probably going to need to be adjusted over the next several years as we go through the city's financial position next year. But they really list all the projects that we really need to do over the next five years. So this year's capital plan highlights, we're asking for $2.8 million in general fund projects, $400,000 in sewer fund projects, and $800,000 in the water fund project. Just to note, this year, we got through our department heads' request for $11.4 million in projects. So you see, we needed to cut this significantly. So this year, we're adding 13 projects in the general fund, one project in the sewer fund, and two projects in the water. Projects that are completed presently and underway are 65 from previous budgets. And the projects that are not completed this year will be carried over from the current plan into next year's plan. Here's some of the highlights of some of the projects that were completed or in progress this year. Reconstruction of the 600 block of West Hudson. Reconstruction of the 100 block of West Market, which is in progress. Overlays, we overlaid West Beach Street from Tennessee Avenue to Nevada Avenue. East Chester from Neptune to Curly, and Broadway from Pacific to Maple. And just as a side note, you will be seeing some overlay that is being done down in the West End in this next week. Connecticut, Georgia and Indiana, from Beach to overview, Ocean View, and Ocean View from Maryland all the way to Connecticut. These projects are being done by National Grid and PSENG. I'd just like to take a minute and introduce my Deputy Commissioner Joe Fabrizio. And the reason I'm doing that is he was able to negotiate with them, the work that they were doing, that they would be responsible when they were done with both their work, PSENG and National Grid, to overlay those streets from curb to curb, which is very unusual for public utilities to do. So that's really been a great savings to the city. And as you drive around the West End, you'll see a lot of the work that they've done, and there's still additional paving that will be done by them. So we made out very well there, so I just wanted to thank Joe for that.[1168.01][1168.01](APPLAUSE) In parks and recreation, we continue every year with our dune grass planting. We finished all the new permanent ticket booths at the beach park entrances. We had done half of them last year, we finished the other half this year. That was all done by our beach maintenance people. We're almost complete with the ice arena bathroom and locker room renovation. In the buildings, we're in progress on the second floor bathrooms in City Hall, making them ADA compliant. We installed a new generator at the Maple Avenue Firehouse, and we put in a new parking field with drainage at the MLK Center. In the sewer, we are in the process of cleaning out the digesters. We're rehabilitating the grid chambers, the primary settling tanks, and the pumps are in, and that's all work in progress. It's almost $2 million worth of work. New sewer collection mains were installed on 600 West Hudson, and 100 West Market is being done now. In water, we continued our hydrant replacement program. Our hydrant replacement program, what we're attempting to do is eliminate the different types of hydrants. I have one hydrant that was put in that will withstand the saltwater effect on steel, and they've seemed to have been working out pretty good. Within another 10 years, we will have no hydrants older than 30 years in the system. Hydrants generally have a life of about 75 years. New water mains on 600 West Hudson, and a new water main is in progress on Market Street also. And in addition, we're in the process of designing the water mains in the walks. Road overlays, okay, these are the proposed projects now. Road overlays, we plan on doing $400,000 in road overlays this year. This is important because all this cost is covered by New York State Department of Transportation's Capital Highway Improvement Program. We have curb and sidewalk rehabilitation for $100,000. This is to do, take care of the sidewalks where we do cutting caps for houses that are raised. Transportation, we have a project in at $65,000 to rehabilitate the bus station and parking garage at the railroad. We have some structural issues there, not serious, but enough that they need to be taken care of, and this would be our $65,000 match. The other money would come from the FTA and the New York State Department of Transportation. And in technology, we're doing a radio upgrade to the fire department radios. In buildings, we're going to be reconstructing of the beach comfort stations that hadn't been replaced in lifeguard headquarters. We have funding from FEMA of $1.7 million, but we need an additional $1.1 million. And this is time-critical because the Army Corps project on the sand replenishment will be driving all the piles and crossovers for us, so we have to be ready to move to install those. And also, a new generator in City Hall that coordinates with the OEM office at $120,000. In the parks area, we need to do an evaluation of the ice arena building. The exterior wall on the east side is starting to show some real signs of deterioration, and we need to get on that before it's beyond repair. Tree planting, we have $12,500 to match a $50,000 grant through the New York State Urban Forestry Grant Program. And we're doing a beach bathroom rehabilitation at Pacific for $80,000. That one is going to be done by the beach maintenance people. And we had, that's a bathroom that's at ground level on Pacific Avenue. And we'll be doing dune plantings at $125,000. We're responsible to continue to maintain the dunes that we built. Public safety, we're adding leaders in gutters at the Maple Avenue Firehouse. The whole interior of that firehouse was just reconstructed, and we're having some leak problems because of the gutters, so we want to get to that before we do any damage to the firehouse. Economic development, we have $150,000 to do an EAF and an EIS for the comprehensive plan, and finally, a zoning study for $450,000. Those are all the general fund projects. EIF is an environmental informational document, and the EIS is an environmental information study. That's all related to SEQA. That will all need to be done before we can do the zoning and adopt the comprehensive plan. In water, we did not add any money to water mains replacements this year. We have a $1.9 million carryover, and we did add $500,000 for hydrant and water service replacement. That's all work that's done in-house by our water department distribution crews. And this, to me, is one of the most important things we need to do, is a saltwater intrusion study and model for $300,000. We are on a barrier island. There's a lot going on with New York City in terms of them wanting to reinstate wells that they have, and I think it's very important that we have a study done that tells us, how long do we have till we look at the potential for chloride contamination of our wells? And what are our options? Purchase water, reestablish where we have our wells, go to smaller wells, spread more out through the system, treatment? So these things all need to be looked at so that we're prepared in the future. Eventually, it's going to happen. I don't think soon, but we should be very prepared for it. In sewer, we added $400,000 to the current carryover, $439,000 for sewer main replacements, because we'll be doing some other road work, complete roadworks, and we'll need this to be able to replace the sewer lines. These are projects that will be funded by some of the carryover money, so this is not new money we're asking for. This is money that exists in capital. Unlike operating funds, when the operating budget's over, you lose all the operating funds, the surplus, and then they cannot be reused. They have to be rebudgeted for operating. In capital, once you approve a project, money for a project, it carries over till a project is done. So we're going to reconstruction of Pacific Avenue, the design is done for that already. Reconstruction of the 200 block of East Fulton. And instead of using an engineer firm for the 200 block of East Fulton, because we've had so many projects, obviously from the lack of projects, as you have more time, Joe and myself will actually be doing the engineering on that and save some money for the city. We're going to do some parking field extensions on Broadway at Laurelton and National Boulevard. Should add about 60 spots down there. Those parking fields on Broadway don't go all the way to those intersections. This was a suggestion from Commissioner Tagney. We have some money left over for police department technology upgrades and some collaboration software for better managing the city. Now, in addition to the $4 million we have in capital funds, we also have $20 million of projects that are going to be funded by the New York Rising Community Reconstruction Program. These projects require no funding at all from the city. They're paid directly by New York Rising, so as we expand funds, we submit bills to New York Rising, they send us a check, and we pay the consults and the contractors. These projects include the stormwater remediation project of $4.4 million, the North Shore Bulkhead on the West End, $7.8 million, and the North Shore Bulkhead on the East End, $6.7 million, and the OEM office at $1.4 million. Excuse me, one minute. In addition, we have capital projects that are funded by FEMA and other grants. We still have 30 million point six projects that are in progress. These projects do need to be bonded, and then they're reimbursed by FEMA or other granting agencies. This includes the bulkhead replacement for private homeowners. We're budgeting $1.5 million. These will be paid back over 20 years by the homeowners to cover the bonds. The critical infrastructure bulkhead, which is going to go out to bid in September, is $20 million. This is the bulkhead that's going to protect the wastewater plant, the sewer plant, the railroad, and any of our other critical facilities, water mains, gas main, electric, along Water Street. Reconstruction of the beach comfort stations, I said already, we have $1.7 million from FEMA. And I just missed, I'm sorry, the bus station rehabilitation for $585,000. That's the FTA match and the DOT match. Rehabilitation of the central garage, this is a hazard mitigation project to repair the floors in the garage, $568,000. Hazard mitigation of various city buildings, hardening all the city buildings, senior center, the animal shelter, first floor at City Hall, the rec center, the ice arena. We have $1.7 million agreed to in hazard mitigation projects from FEMA. Tree planting, we're going to be getting a grant for $50,000 due to our involvement in Tree City, and we're also going to be getting a grant for a tree inventory of $25,000. Again, back to hazard mitigation projects, we have $4 million worth of projects to do with the wastewater treatment plant to protect that. Now, there's a chance that that money will be used to build the pump station instead and divert it as part of the protection of wastewater. And water purification plant hazard mitigation money of $640,000. So this is the overview of the budget for the year, the plan summary. We've requested $2.8 million in the general fund, $1.2 million been requested for sewer and water. And over the next five years, these are all projects that need to be done. You can see that, you know, we're in the $8 million range for the first three years in the water fund. We need to eventually build a new water tank. In the general fund... In the general fund, you can see we've pushed a lot of projects off into next year, which are going to have to be rescheduled because we're at 23 million, but you can see there's a level of 11 to 13 million dollars of needed work, and obviously, until the finance is approved, this is going to have to be spread out much further, so next year, we'll be looking at this a little bit closer. And that's my presentation, if anybody has any questions.
[applause] Next question, 35,000 of gutters and leaders in the one really?
Yes. If, if we didn't have to follow the state laws for prevailing wage, we could probably do that project for about $6,000, but the state law requires any public works project must use prevailing wage, which means it gets into a bidding situation, and we're probably going to be in the $35,000 range. It's meant to protect the taxpayers, but it doesn't.
Can you explain where the block is that each side of that Broadway?
Yes, at Laurelton and National, at National where the Allegria is, the parking doesn't go all the way to the intersection on one, on Broadway. So there'll be two sides of park, and each one of those will probably pick up maybe 20 spots in each one.
Does anyone from the council have any questions for Commissioner Morendo?
Yeah.
Just give us one second, Commissioner. I have a question about the, the water project in the walks.
Yes.
We had, we had squirreled away some money to be saving for that.
A good portion of that is the 1.9 million in the water fund.
Okay. And we're only going to start the engineering, is that, is that right?
The engineering is in progress now.
Okay.
And that engineering, by the way, is, we're going to look at water, sewer, drainage, and lighting. When we do the project for the water, we're probably just going to do the water, drainage, and lighting, and then at another later date down the road, we'll do the sewer, because they're two, they're going to be two very complicated projects.
So I know that, that's one of the most critical projects in the city that needs to get done, and probably one of the most costly. When do you anticipate work starting on that?
I would think in next year's budget.
Next year's budget, okay.
Commissioner, can you just elaborate a little bit with respect to the bus station rehabilitation? You indicated here that as a city, we're responsible for the 65,000, which is the 10% match. Can you just elaborate with respect to the contributions of the FTA as well as the New York State DOT?
Right. We're going to apply to them as this is, acts as our bus garage. It's also the parking for the Long Island Railroad. If you notice, when you drive up there, the slabs are moving a little bit. They're not, we've had a structural engineer look at them already. They're not in danger of collapsing or anything, but we want to get them repaired and so that down the road, they don't get to that point. But, so our portion of it would be 65,000, and a portion from the state, and the Federal Transportation Association would be 565,000.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I just have one question. On the roads and drainage for the proposed projects, the roadway overlays, you had said that the cost is covered by the New York State Department of Transportation, the CHIPS program?
CHIPS, that's the Capital Highway Improvement Program. Every year, based on the mileage of lane miles that we have in the city, we get funding from the city that goes into our revenues, so every year, if we don't do the projects, we don't get the money.
But do you have to lay out the funds, or?
We lay out the funds, and every three months, we submit for payment, and they're pretty, they have a pretty quick turnaround, so we just, as a matter of fact, submitted two payment requests for the rest of the funds that we have coming to us this year.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, can you also speak to the zoning study? You've indicated $450,000.
I think I'm going to refer to Patty Vaughn, because that was a request from her department, and she can certainly give you a lot more information on that than I can.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Gaff, you can just elaborate a little bit and speak to the zoning study?
Sure. First of all, through the combined comprehensive plan and the proposed zoning study and EIS, about half of the funds have already been acquired by the city through grants that have paid for both city staff and for the consultants. The purpose of the zoning study is essentially to bring our 30-year-old zoning code updated to the current time. We will have extensive neighborhood meetings to involve residents in recommendations and decision-making on the revised zoning. We'll have easy-to-understand visuals of what currently is in the zoning and what's proposed with community input, so people can understand how it will make them a better community. The zoning update, when it's adopted, will help in our goals to improve our rating with the community rating system for flood insurance purposes, thereby, again, reducing, as we've already done, again, reducing the cost to homeowners and residents for flood insurance. If we ever have another significant disaster and FEMA funds come in, whatever is in the plan and in the zoning FEMA would be, and adopted, FEMA would then be required to prepare and submit and support our current codes. So in the past few years, we've had to fight FEMA for them to provide us with upgrades for resiliency, because their laws require them to do just what you had prior. And our, what we've all learned is it's so important to be resilient, to protect us for the future. Whatever's in the codes, in the new zoning code, they, FEMA will have to follow there by giving us more money and allow us to bring it up to a resilient level. And connected to all this would be the addition of a planning board made up of local residents, and those residents would be another view on development and to give input. And the key to other things that I want to mention, if I may, on the, on the zoning, is that the building department and the zoning board of appeals is handicapped now with a 30-year-old code. Thereby, it not only makes it more complicated for current residents to go to the building department and request any improvements to their home or to their building, but if they have to raise, which so many of our residents have had to raise their homes, it made it much more complicated and costly, because so many have had to go to the zoning board of appeals. If we update the code, and there's anything in the future people need to do in addition to what they've already done, or something new, it will be a much more efficient, time-saving, and cost-saving experience for residents. It will also, for development, which is a big concern in our community, of future development, provide controls by the building department and the zoning board of appeals and the potential planning board, so that development would be under controls, thereby making any development more consistent with what the city's goals and policies are.
Thank you so much. I mean, obviously, once again, we thank you for your leadership, because we understand that changing the codes, updating the codes, is a part of our responsibility, and it's a part of our commitment to moving the city forward. My only other question is, what percentage of this money would be, actually be used to pay for the consultants?
Oh, thank you so much for asking that. The anticipated that the, all the funds would be used for consultants, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because I've, I neglected to mention that in the slideshow that was presented by Mr. Morendo, it mentioned the EIS, Environmental Impact Statement.
Okay.
The process would be that the comprehensive plan would be adopted. As soon as the comprehensive plan would be adopted, we'd do a zoning RFP, request for proposals for consultants who meet our qualifications and our needs, with the involvement, of course, of the city council and our advisory committee of residents, and once the consultants are hired, they go out and do what I described. Once the draft zoning document is updated, because there's a technical element to it too, that requires attorneys who are consistent and updated on New York State codes, we'd have to hire, so this is all a team that would come in and do all this for us. Once it's done, then we're required, under New York State, New York State law under CEQA, to do an environmental impact study to look at the consequences, the impacts of the proposed zoning updates, on traffic, on water, on sewer, on et cetera. Once that is all completed and it's adopted and approved by the city council, then the zoning can finally be adopted. So all that is a complex process that's required, and I will say, the estimate of the costs that we put into the proposed capital plan are based upon an investigation I did of local Long Island communities and what they've paid for similar kinds of projects.
Thanks for the clarification.
Commissioner, if I can just ask one question. On the capital projects to be funded by carryover, you wrote, listed here as police department technology updates. If you could just elaborate on what that is, and does it include radios?
No, I don't believe that includes radios. That includes things for East Lag and the computer readouts for the cars, for license plate readers. You're right. It's pretty much all warranty costs.
Patty, sorry, you sat back down before I got my question out. We had received a grant from Toro, off, a grant and...
John, you use the microphone.
Sorry. We had received the grant and had, were utilizing Toro College to do what I believe was some sort of zoning study, whether it was a pre-study. Can you just, what, what work was accomplished there, and how does it feed into this zoning study?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bendel. That's a good question. We had gotten a verbal and written confirmation from Toro Law School. Of course, I'm not an attorney, but attorneys put in writing, it's pretty comfortable that they're moving forward. They had acquired a grant from New York State C grant, which was federal funds, and they wrote to us and told us that they would be working with us on helping us with our zoning. The bottom line is that Toro went in a new direction. The woman who ran the program, who has national recognition, left for Arkansas, the program collapsed, their staff collapsed even though they brought through us, and the funds were moved to Pace Law School. And this took several years after a lot of our inquiry. So the bottom line is, what they've offered to us, and we've been able to do, is they've offered training, and we have involved both city staff and community residents in training now for two years, a three-day class in laws and environmental resiliency protection that was run by Toro Law School, Pace Law School, New York State DEC, New York State DOS, and consult, consultation from FEMA and from EPA. So that trained about 10 people from Long Beach, which was much larger than anyone got in this training. They did a workbook for us, and they're going to be doing the next training in the fall, and we'll have the opportunity, and I'd love it if the city council members want to recommend staff and/or community residents to go through the training, which provides a lot of knowledge to move forward. So that's how it shaped up. It was beyond our control.
Okay, so, so no actual zoning study was done?
No, they, they promised it to, I can show you the emails.
Sure, okay.
It distresses me, but that's what happened.
And then one other question. I know this has come up at, at several of the, the meetings, the, the question of, once the comprehensive plan is passed, that the zoning has to match what's in the comprehensive plan. So I was wondering if you could address that, and if that, in fact, is true, what would the study accomplish if we just have to make the zoning match what's in the comprehensive plan?
The goals in the comprehensive plan, again, with consultation by our consultants with New York State Department of State, with NYSERDA, our funders, was to have guidelines and to have a general achievable goals that reflects current needs of the community in resiliency, anti-overdevelopment, anti-gentrification, economic development, community character, affordable housing to keep people in Long Beach. So those were our goals, and the general outline is in the plan, and with a lot of emphasis on resiliency, because when we applied for the funds, resiliency backed right after Sandy was obviously number one priority, and they're all important priorities, but that was the number one, so that's how the update was done. The goals are intentionally vague, and I say that because some people have said, why aren't there specific height requirements? And it was intentionally left vague because the idea is now, and we've learned this also from the residents and from the city council through the process we've gone through, the importance of, of looking at a neighborhood level at the needs, because every neighborhood in Long Beach is different, and every neighborhood in Long Beach has certain goals. Therefore, a building height for the canals, for example, is not the same as for Park Avenue here in the downtown, nor for the west end. So it's respectful for the residents, the current development patterns, as we call it in jargon, planning jargon, the community character, to preserve our communities and their character at the same time, to be somewhat flexible in other areas. That will come out through the zoning. That's why the plan was left intentionally general.
Okay, so, so just to, for clarity, I mean, I know there were building heights in there in an earlier version, they were removed, so by leaving it vague, will that create any complications? Again, since the zoning's required to comply with the comprehensive plan, since the plan is vague, will that create any complications in, in the zoning study? Because there's no model for the zoning study to follow with specifics.
No, we had, again, checked with both our corporate council office and their expertise. We checked with Toro Law, was actually Pace Law School, and I checked both with our funders, with Department of State, who are the repository of all zoning, statewide zoning considerations, and also NYSERDA, who provided extensive amount of funding. No, not a problem at all.
All right, thank you. And I guess I'll switch players now. On the reconstruction of the beach comfort stations, that FEMA is going to pay 1.7 million, but the city's going to have to pay 1.1 million. I thought, and I may be wrong, just so correct me if I am, in some earlier discussions on this, that the, that FEMA, that Mr. Fabrizio had worked out with FEMA, they were going to replace what we had, and as a result, was not going to cost the city any money.
No, actually, what they, what they did was replace the square footage that we had.
Right.
But they did it based on the money that we spent, so the square footage of the buildings came out, you know, they felt they could give us 1.7 for, but once these buildings started to be designed and installing them, and the fact that they have to be installed at higher elevations is really going to cost more than 1.7, FEMA is not going to give us any more money. We weren't going to get anything at all from FEMA, and we're just going to be stuck with our bathrooms, so.
Okay, so we're just making, basically making up the difference what FEMA is willing to pay?
We're making up the difference from what FEMA is willing to pay for them.
Okay, and just one other question. On the capital projects that will be funded by FEMA, but you said we're going to need to bond for about almost 31 million. On those reimbursements, is the city reimbursed, and this might be more of Miss Hightower question, is the city reimbursed for interest we pay on those bonds? Okay, so the city does have to pay the interest even though we're reimbursed for the capital itself? All right, thank you.
I just have a follow-up for the, the beach comfort stations. So after this 2.8 million, the 1.7 from FEMA and the 1.1 from us, we're done with bathrooms. That includes the west end bathroom and the...
We're going to definitely have a better idea on that on Thursday when we receive the bid for the Minnesota Avenue bathroom.
I'm sorry?
We, we have a bid coming in for the Minnesota Avenue bathroom on Thursday. We'll have a better idea where we're going to be then.
Okay.
These are based on initial estimates that we've got from the engineering consultant that put them together.
Okay.
And the company that manufactures the bathrooms.
But, but then that's it? There's no more comfort stations afterwards?
When these comfort stations and the lifeguard headquarters are done, there's no more comfort stations, everyone has been replaced that existed on the beach before. There is provisions on the lifeguard station. There was some concern that they, someday, we might want a larger lifeguard station, so the lifeguard station at Riverside was designed to be able to take a second floor.
Any other questions from the council?
I just have one question about the Maple Firehouse, the, the gutter repairs.
Yes.
That can be, to the extent that it's possible, that can be done in-house?
We'd, we'd have to purchase the equipment to actually fabricate the gutters.
But the work itself can be done in-house by our beach maintenance, who did a great job. I know some of them are here today, but they did a wonderful job on the room. I don't know if anybody's been down there. It's really, it's really incredible. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to sit with the beach superintendent and see if we had the capability of doing it.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure the beach maintenance carpenters and stuff can do it. It's just whether we have the equipment to do it.
Okay. So to the extent that that can be done, I would ask that we make every effort to make sure, since the project's mostly been completed by them.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Yes, Ms.?
No.
You want to come up to the microphone and state your name and address?
Lucy Centeno, Long Beach. I have a question about the bathrooms on the boardwalk. Are they all A-Day? Are they all ADA accessible?
All bathrooms, including one in Minnesota, will be ADA accessible.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Wow, look at that.
Okay. Yeah, doesn't sound... I have several questions. The initial request was for $11 million for the capital improvements from the city fund. It went down to 2.8. What aren't we doing?
Well, it went down to 4.3, right? With sewer and water?
4.3, including sewer and water.
2.8, not counting sewer and water.
My understanding is the 11 included the sewer and water?
Yes. The $11 million request included water and sewer.
Yes, it did. 11.2.
So what do we deem as not vital, I think is what Mr. Lester is asking?
Well, everything is vital, but the things that we cut out are... We cut out $100,000 in roadway construction, $35,000 to an upgrade on the alarm panel, $15,000 on signage material. We've cut out all requests for vehicle equipment. We cut out the request for five sanitation trucks for...
Can you just give me numbers?
Total numbers?
Well, no. I mean, when you say you cut out, you started giving us numbers.
Oh, you want me to give you numbers? Okay. I'll go through the list. ESLAG vehicle, LPR unit, 18,000. Mobile ticketing integration scan of $48,888. DA bathroom at City Hall, $75,000. City Hall improvements, $95,000. Surface ice maker at the ice arena, $92,000. Salt storage dome, $50,000. Truck washing station. These are for design, $30,000. Fencing, $30,000. Sun shade for the dog park, $8,500. $30,000 for recreation van.
Can you give me just, let's say, the big guys? We're talking...
The guys? The sanitation trucks were about $1 million.
Uh-huh.
The payloader was $375,000. A tractor for $120,000. I don't... These were the last projects that I was trying to cut that I have the list here for. I don't have the complete list for all the things in front of me. But we cut out every equipment request. We cut out requests for new backer boards and equipment at the ice skating rink to the tune of about $700,000. We cut out an expansion of the Magnolia Senior Center. Those I don't have here because this was the second cut that I had with me. So we cut out a significant amount, and some of them we just pushed into the following years.
Well, speaking of the following years, I see next year you have, I think, 23 million?
It's not going to happen. It's just a placeholder for the... So that we don't lose track of the projects that we need to eventually do in the city.
Okay. So each year, those millions are really realistic?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, on the zoning study, I'm still kind of confused on that. Because, John, you brought up the fact that it has to... The zoning has to follow the comprehensive plan. Yet I heard the comprehensive plan is nebulous or loose or whatever word you want to say. Why are we spending money now for a zoning study? For a... Something that we can't really do something with?
Well, Patty, you want to answer this? We have to get the zoning done. The sooner we get the zoning done, the better. I mean, I think everybody is overreading the requirement that the zoning has to be exactly what's in the plan. Okay? The zoning has to meet the intent of the plan. But I'll let Patty expand on that.
Under New York state law, zoning is based upon a comprehensive plan. It's been upheld by courts all over the state. Therefore, we needed to do the comprehensive plan, and the zoning will be based upon the guidelines in the plan, which is based upon a lot of community input. And the zoning will be specific, and when adopted, it will have the rule of law and direct further development in the city.
Right. But we're spending $400,000 this year for the zoning consultants. Correct?
It will be over probably a year, year and a half, the money will be spent. For both, excuse me, both the zoning and also the environmental impact statement, which is required under state law.
All right. It just says here, zoning study. That's the only thing for the $400,000.
Yes.
Yes, that's above that. That comes out to $550,000. Yeah, I understand. I'm just questioning the zoning. That was the only thing I was questioning. I still don't see it. The other thing, the saltwater intrusion model. These studies have been done by the counties already. Okay? I understand New York. I understand New York wanting to go into the Lloyd Aquifer. I understand the problem. Basically, what Suffolk County has said is it's, you know, it will be a problem, but it's 50 years away, given the size of the aquifer. Why are we spending $300,000? Why aren't we taking the other studies that are...
Because I don't think the other... This is my area of expertise now. I've been a water supplier for 40 years.
And I think you were at the meeting.
Yes. And we really don't have enough information here in Long Beach. We have one outpost well that they have data from. Okay? And I think the knee-jerk reaction politically to stop the city from using their wells in Jamaica's whole territory may hurt us in the long run. And that's one of the reasons I'm pushing for the study. We need to know how that can benefit us. I'll give you an example. In the '70s and the '80s, Jamaica Water pumped 60 million gallons of water a day. When they did that, they lowered the water table. In order to offset capital costs, the city made a deal with Jamaica Water to sell them 30 million gallons of water a day. Jamaica Water stopped using 60 million gallons of groundwater a day and started using 30 million gallons. When they did that, the water table rose again. As a matter of fact, then, when Jamaica Water was sold and the city stopped using those wells completely, the water table recovered so much that many apartment houses and homes were being flooded from the high groundwater. Okay? Now, the city's looking for an emergency supply, right? I think our position should be that the city should not be allowed to use any of the Lloyd wells. However, we should allow them to develop 30 million gallons of water use a day. And what we should have them do with that in non-emergency times is supply that water to the North Shore of Long Island, where many suppliers use the Lloyd Aquifer, which is at its shallowest. The Lloyd Aquifer is recharged on the North Shore. So that's something I'd want to have our consultants look at. If that could be done, that could hold off the saltwater interface that's facing us. Additionally, beyond what do we do when we get saltwater intrusion? When we get chlorides in the water? The study's going to be more about treating. What do we do? What are the treatment options? What are the purchase options? What are the options of continuing to use our own wells but spreading them out? Those things all need to be looked at. And I think it's one of the most important studies the city should do.
No, I understand. But you and I were at the same presentation. And, you know, the way it was presented, the way Suffolk County had looked into it, the studies that they've done, the incredible amount of data that they had, seemed... It seems that we would be redundant with 300,000. But I'm not an expert on saltwater, so... I mean, I'm an expert on saltwater.
Yeah. And again, I say there's not enough data here in Long Beach on it.
Okay. Reasonable minds. Last thing. The 30 million that we would take from FEMA funds that we would have to bond, does anybody... Has anybody figured out what that would cost us a year?
Well, we wouldn't bond it all at the same time. We would bond it as we do the projects. And as we get reimbursed, we'd have to know how long it takes to get reimbursed. So typically, those would be long-term. Bonds would be about $80,000. About $80,000 a year in interest.
I mean, right now, we're spending $4 million on interest. $4 million on interest alone. And we have, what, about $95 million in bonds? Something like that?
[inaudible].
I can't hear you.
[inaudible].
Yeah. So $4 million on $90 million, that's a lot of interest. So I'm looking $30 million, you know?
Well, I don't know else. Do the projects. Otherwise, we're going to lose that funding, too.
Well, we could try to establish something where we... Like with New York Rising, we know we're getting paid. We know that the money's coming in, and we know we don't have to pay until that money comes in. I don't understand why something like that can't be established with FEMA. And so that the contractor says, "Hey, you're getting your money from this funding." And rather than the city being responsible for it... I'm sorry, my time's up. I got it.
Is that possible, Ms. Hightower?
No. So the difference between the Goaster funding is that we show them the invoices from the vendor. They put money into our bank account. We then use that money to cut the check. FEMA wants to see a canceled check before they give us any money. That's the difference.
But we have no arrangement with FEMA when we're going to get it. That's why we're doing the bonding now for the $4 million.
The hazard mitigation works a little bit differently.
Yeah. Hazard mitigation works a lot differently. A lot of the funding that we didn't get from FEMA was because we held off on closing out some projects. And the reason we held out on closing those projects is, once you close a project, that's it. You're not getting any more money for it. Okay? So we wanted to be sure that all those projects were complete and done before we did a closeout on it. So there won't be as much delay in the hazard mitigation projects and receiving money from FEMA.
Your word, from your mouth to God's ears, right?
Yeah, well, I hope so.
Any other questions or comments about the capital plan? State your name and address.
Patrick, off East 225 West Park Avenue. You're talking about the water on Long Island. Okay? So you got some contamination from fire retardant from Magartha Airport in our water. Okay? Out in Long Island. Am I right?
We have no contamination in our water here on Long Beach.
No, no, no. I didn't say Long Beach. I said Long Island. Long Island. Okay? Grumman, toxins from Grumman. I worked at Grumman. Okay? In the water. You have to start looking above the horizon and start looking at desalination. You have to. You have no choice. Water's going to be more, probably triple in 30 years than a gallon of gas. Trust me. At the rate the people are consuming water, and the superblock building goes up, you're going to have real serious problems. All right. I just wanted to put my input on it.
Any other questions or comments about the capital improvement plan?
I just want to ask one. Commissioner Morando, was desalination going to be considered as part of this?
That would be one of the treatment options. And remember, you're not... One thing, if that's a treatment option, you're not treating seawater. You're treating brackish water, water that has high levels of chlorides.
Thank you. Next.
Yeah. Hi. Good evening. Jay Gussler. Ms. Diamond actually got my wheels to turn when she mentioned the possibility of doing that gutter job in-house. I went online real quick, and I looked in a top-of-the-line gutter extruding machine. It's less than $8,000. A coil of aluminum that will produce 900 lineal feet of gutter is about $1,300. So we could basically buy a machine, have that machine to use on any other future city projects in perpetuity, buy more than enough sheet metal to probably go gutters around that firehouse five or six times, and we'd still be under $10 grand. I'm sure that the CSCEA guys could do the labor on that for far less than $25 grand. So I think that that's something that you guys...
So my... Two things. The commissioner said he would look into it. And secondly, as you know, when we purchase through RFPs, that $8,000 is going to be more than that. Maybe not to the $35,000 that we have estimated. But he did say he would look into that, and he would talk to the superintendent of beach maintenance or whatever department would cover it.
All right. Well, again, I just think it's something you guys should look at. It's relatively small amount of money, but in the grand scheme of things...
He already said he would, sir.
All right. Second thing is, I was having a difficult time following Ms. Bourne's explanation. So Toro College was going to do a study on our zoning? Yes?
That's how I understand it, yes.
Okay. And then not anymore?
Because the money went to Pace, is what I just heard.
All right. And so that's it? Just they say they're going to do it, and then they pull out, and now we got to pay $450,000 for what they were going to do for us?
Is that accurate?
Under a grant?
Were they going to do the whole thing or just a piece of it? Ms. Bourne?
They were just going to do a piece of it on resiliency issues.
That's it?
They had a small grant, yes. They were never going to do the whole thing.
All right. I just... It was hard to distill that from your answer.
Mona Goodman, Long Beach.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, and please forgive me, serious question. Was the capital improvement budget printed? And is it available somewhere? Because quite honestly, I'm old school. I like to hold it in my hand and look at it, and I had a hard time with the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah. So we just all received this, and I believe it'll be posted online tomorrow?
It already is posted online now.
It's already posted? There you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes. Mr. DeLore. The water in the walks.
Good evening. Mike DeLore, Long Beach. Question for Patty Bourne. Can you tell me why we don't have a planning advisory board? Because in the charter, it states that it can be up to 11 people. I know I've stated and asked for something like this for... Not to you directly, and I know, but collectively. Because the follow-up to that question is, if we have to adopt a comprehensive plan to get one, I don't believe that it should go the other way around, since we have it in the city charter. Number two is, if you adopt a comprehensive plan with the zoning that you're recommending down the road, does that eliminate the zoning board of appeals?
No, those are good questions. As I understand it, as you said, in city charter and maybe still online, there was at one time a planning advisory committee. I don't know about it. It was before I was here. What we're proposing is a planning board, which would take... And again, I've talked to the state about this, Department of State. It would take a number of months to put this together. And it makes sense that once the comprehensive plan is adopted, that we go into formation of a planning board, which would have powers under New York state law that an advisory board would not. And it would need time to select the appropriate people, diverse groups of people that we've agreed to, to train them. Because when you have a board, like a zoning board, the intent is not to change everyone at the same time, because you need expertise. So if you have a new board, it will take time so that they can do their job properly. Now, regarding the zoning board of appeals, no, that would continue. It has a different role. They are looking at when their appeals, when the building department denies a certain project due to the fact that it's not consistent with the current zoning. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions regarding or comments regarding the comprehensive plan? Yes, ma'am? Just please your name and address for the record.
Dino White, Illinois Avenue. What's the plan on repaving Illinois Avenue? Why are you stopping at Connecticut?
Joe, is there still work going on on Illinois?
Yes, we're still... We're going to be...
Yes, we're still, we're gonna be, our national grid, PSEG is gonna be overlaying Illinois south of New Chetley, Ohio, and a section of the lot as well. Right now, they're finishing up basically this whole base, based on that section. So right now, we're just trying to push that to finish Connecticut, Indiana, Georgia, and Ocean View, Maryland to, to, maybe right now.
Well, they've already been down Illinois. They've broken our water main as they were fixing their pipes, and nobody communicated that, that we'd have broken water main by them. And they also went into my parents' house down on Illinois, and when they went to relight the pilot lights, my parents don't live there, the tenant let them in, they left the stove burners lit for three weeks. There was, the burners left on low to make sure that the, so they're doing a crappy job, in my opinion. And they also broke up the brand-new sidewalk that we just put in. So who's responsible for fixing the sidewalk?
If they broke it, they're responsible.
Well, when's it gonna happen? Because all they put in...
When they're finished with their work, they're gonna come back and do all that.
They finished our block.
Well, then they're gonna come back in the next phase of paving and do that. And they also have to wait until, when they put temporary blacktop down where they've excavated, they wait till everything settles. Because if you start to do paving and concrete repairs right away before everything settles, you'll get cracking and settlement. So they will be back, and we stay on top of them to get to that. So if you call DPW with the specific complaints, we'll talk to our municipal layers on and pass them on.
We've called, so there's no timeframe on when Illinois is gonna be done, is what I'm hearing.
We don't have that right now. I seen them last week out, I was down there. I just heard Vegas, I meant for...
No, they've already been all cut off.
I know, but you haven't measured how much they've...
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So, ma'am, if you could just call DPW or after we're done with the capital plan, just give your address and information to the DPW commissioner so that we can follow up with you.
We've done that, and you don't get a response. So that's why I'm trying to get some answers.
You gave, gave me your address.
We've made phone calls, yes.
Well, if you call me and give it to me, we have a municipal representative from that grid, and we will speak to them directly, and they'll come out and take care of it. Okay? We will follow up on every one of these, so, bye.
Thank you. Ma'am? Name and address? Thank you, Ryan.
Jennifer Maldonado, Long Beach, New York. Good evening. For the zoning study, I just had a question about who specifically is going to do it because I understand that Toro Law Center program fell through and then the money went to PACE. So who specifically is going to conduct the zoning study?
You don't have to go to RFP, right?
The city has procedures. We need to do an open process called a request for proposals, RFP, and we will do that, and a committee will be formed by the city to select the consultant team.
So the $400,000, it could be either more or less than that?
Well, that's on the high side. We're hoping it would be less. One of the reasons why we put that amount in is because we've learned through the comprehensive planning process that we have unique neighborhoods which need to be looked at, and people need to be engaged. I've certainly learned that, and I appreciate learning that from the community. Therefore, we anticipate a number, quite a number of meetings, because we've had a lot of more meetings with the comprehensive plan than we ever anticipated.
And when was the last zoning study done?
30 years ago.
And then for the, but after this zoning study, when do you anticipate the next one to be?
That will be up to the city. It's certainly easier to update a document once it's been updated after 30 years, and it could be updated under state law at any time. Some communities do that, the town of North Hempstead, I know the Village of Great Neck Plaza, they update theirs on a regular basis.
And I apologize for this question. I actually came in a little late, so I'm sorry about this, but for the road, for the street curbside reconstruction, as far as the midtown, downtown area, or like the east end area, did you cover that in your presentation as to which blocks or from...
What we'll do is, we'll take the money we have for overlays, and we'll go in, we have a document that was prepared about 10 years ago, and we've rated all the roads on what needs, and we'll take, pick the worst roads, and we'll overlay them. So, so we don't have specific roads yet for overlays, no.
Well, the only reason why I'm asking is because I noticed that, for instance, in the canal areas, the roads or, and the sidewalks are pretty smooth, and they're all nice and neat and everything. And then I notice also, though, like East Hudson, or Pine Street, or East Market, those sidewalks and roads are pretty dilapidated and bad, and I was wondering if that's gonna happen.
You know, it's about a million dollars a mile to pave roads, so, you know, there's 52 miles of road, so we have to pick the worst ones, and we do that. Some people may think they have the worst road, but they're, we'll look at them all. We go through our report, and we knock them off in order, so...
And what are the worst roads right now in Long Beach?
I don't have it right in front of me.
Off the top of your head, any one?
I'm not gonna guess off the top of my head.
We posted the road study...
Right, we did put, the road study was put on the, on the website. And you can go in there and you can look and see which are the worst roads in each section of Long Beach.
And sometimes it changes, though, because of construction?
Right, and I, what we did on that list, we didn't have a Word document, but we did cross out what's been done. So you can see what's been done on the most critical roads.
I had it up, but I didn't see it in there. But, oh, I said I had it up, but I didn't see it in there. I could be wrong, though. But any street, just any. Which one would be the priority one?
They haven't been picked yet. We'll go through the report, okay? As I say, we do the overlays based on the amount of CHIPS money we get back.
No, is there an issue? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was interrupted by someone having a comment in the middle of you answering me.
We do the level of overlays to match our chip reimbursement, and when we get ready to do the overlay contract, we'll go through the roads in that list, and we'll pick the ones out we're gonna do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments about the comprehensive plan? Questions or comments about the comprehensive plan? Okay, so I'm not gonna...
President Rama, can, I just want to follow up on a question that a resident had before with respect to copies, making copies available of the plan. Will copies of this plan be available for our next meeting?
Copies of the plan for, the plan is the, you mean the capital plan?
Yes.
The capital plan is already online.
No, I understand that, but it's customary, we've done it for the past three years, that we do have some copies available here.
Okay.
I agree, I agree with that. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying yes or no. What I'm saying is usually, it's customary that we do have a copy here that's available for people to look at.
I'm sorry, I don't have it with me.
Thank you.
Do you want some?
No, I don't need it.
Oh, okay.
We should put it in the lobby. We should put some...
Okay.
Yeah, why don't we, we'll, we'll make sure that there's some...
And there'll be a copy available at my counter as well.
Okay, but maybe some downstairs.
Okay, so I'm not gonna close the hearing. We're gonna leave the hearing open because we're not voting on it tonight. So we will continue the hearing at the next council meeting.
Okay.
And just go right to the next hearing?
Next hearing. So our third public hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019.
Okay, we're gonna have a short presentation by our acting city manager on the proposed
Okay, while we're getting set up, I just want to give you a little preamble of how I arrived at this budget. When I took over as acting city manager, the first thing I did was assess where we were in the 1718 calendar year on our budget lines per department and met with all the department heads. Simultaneously, I was starting to work on the budget where the department heads put in budget requests, and I split it through all the budget requests, and I decided midway through the process that I was going to try to price out exactly what we have. So my budget, which has been reviewed by the controller, is, and termed reasonable, maintains all of the current city services. So now it's up to the council, based on what from the public, where they want to go with this. But to maintain just what we have, nothing extra, bells and whistles, 1% tax increase. Okay, the process overview, this is the agenda, the process overview, your tax dollars, your tax dollars, current financial status, proposed budget highlights, potential service reductions, and increasing revenues. The process overview, the budget cycle. This is just very simply that. This is how it starts in January, departments, departmental budget worksheets are prepared, they submit their budget, management and the departments negotiate. I tell them they have to cut it, they tell me they can't. Those budgets submitted to the city council on April 10th, goes public on April 20th. We have public hearings like we're doing tonight, and July 1st, our city fiscal year Your taxes, school and county taxes comprise 65% of your tax bill, and city taxes are approximately 35%. Where does, where does that dollar go? 25.7%, 7% goes to employee benefits alone. Public safety, police, fire is 20.6. The general government support is 16.3. Home and community services is 9.8. Other, which is interfund risk retention, transportation, economic opportunity, development, education, recreation is about 8.6, and debt service is 11.3. The financial status of the city. Credibility in the markets. We're going to go out to market next month for $4 million. We have some issues with the last bond being voted down and being moved to a negative outlook that could affect our interest rate. And one of the things that I think is important for everyone to know, when people ask us approximately, what will that be? We are, we find out the interest rates the second we go to bond. There's no ticker of a company, and we'll go to Apple Bank and get it at X number. It's when you go out to bond, who bids on your bond and what they bid. So you don't know until after the bond is authorized. The negative outlook reflects the liquidity challenges the city will have in the near term following years of operating deficit, and city council failure to approve budget borrowing for the operating expenses. So that's what led us to the stress rating from Moody's as well as from the controller's office. City of Long Beach fiscal stress store is now 80.8, which is in the significant category the controllers cited, short-term borrowing, fund balance, and operating deficit. And along those lines with fund balance, due to the fact that we did not pass that $2.1 million bond, which was budgeted for in the budget, we are now $2.1 million short, and I'm anticipating over $3 million hole in the current operating budget. That has to be dealt with by July, June 30th. Financial indicators, year-end fund balance, operating deficits or surpluses, cash position, that was one of the other problems we had when the bond was defeated, we were gonna run out of cash. There was a lot of things that were done to, to offset that so that we can keep the cash coming in. We are very fortunate that one of our most profitable months on May, because the beach revenues start to come in, so that does help with our cash flow. And we have some other, we went on a very, very aggressive going after our, the people that owed us money to get, to bring in all that money. We brought in about half a million dollars with our aggressiveness. I'd like to thank Council Agostisi, he was in charge of that project. Fixed costs, environmental indicators, population, age, and poverty, property values and employment, dependence on revenue from other government units, constitutional tax limits, and sales tax revenue, which has been going down year after year. Okay, where are the challenges? Pension and retirement costs. They actually went down this, this year, but just really not significantly. Contractual labor costs, that's the vast majority of the expenses for the city. The city has a large workforce. We provide services. The employee healthcare cost really jumped this year, and they've gone up 24% over the last four years or five years. And our debt service, as we all know, has been growing. Budget highlights, water fund accounts for 7% of our, our budget. Water is 6, sewer is 7, general fund is 87%. The general fund traditionally associated with general government, for example, general administration, public safety, recreation, employee benefits, property tax, license permits, department reviews, and fund balances. The sewer fund is exactly that, and so is the water fund. Okay, property taxes. The proposed property tax increase includes 12.36 increase in residential, about $33 per household per month. There is, healthcare was a $400,000 increase this year, which is equivalent to 1.09 tax increase since 2015, the last three years. It's gone up an astonishing 24.2%, costing an extra $2 million, $2.4 million, which is about 8% tax increase. Retirement pension costs, they were stabilized. The budget reflects $190,000 decrease. Debt service, there was $696,000 increase in debt service, and this is primarily attributable to recent capital improvements, road reconstruction, recreation upgrades, public safety and transportation equipment, and revenues. Certain revenues relate to non-recurring grants and fees, and the Sandy recovery are reduced in this proposed budget, resulting in a decrease, a decrease of 2.6 million. In the current budget, there was about a million dollars worth of fees in just two different categories that didn't come in. So that's where we created the shortfall in the current budget. I was very mindful of that to make sure that mistake wasn't repeated in this, in this current budget. The proposed budget maintains the same level of services that the public has grown accustomed to by raising property taxes 12.36%. The New York controllers, New York State controllers review, based on the results of our review, we found that the significant revenue and expenditure projections in the proposed budget are reasonable. Potential service cuts. Long Beach is a unique community. There are very many communities on Long Island, only 20 of them have a police department, or 19 of them, and then the 20th is Nassau County. On, in Nassau, on Long Island, there are only two paid fire departments. So we, in many communities, don't have their own recreation department. So we are providing a lot of things for our residents and our visitors, and they all come with a cost. So Long Beach provides a unique combination of services that other municipalities do not. They represent a great tax expense to the city and a significant tax burden to residents. We have a daycare, healthcare, paid fire department, police department, and special events. Magnolia Child Care Center, Early Child Care Center, it serves infants, toddlers, and preschools aged 6 weeks to 4 years old. Municipalities generally do not administer daycare services due to the cost and the liability. It's a, you're really in a treading on dangerous area when you're dealing with infants. The daycare program at the Magnolia Center does not earn sufficient revenue to cover its operations. We lose about $80,000 in that. Healthcare costs currently exempts paramedics and new union members are the only full-time employees that contribute. Proposed budget includes a $400,000 increase, which is a 1.909% tax increase. And as I said before, 24%, equalling $2.4 million. If active union members contribute 5% toward the healthcare, that would amount to $350,000 annually, or 0.95% in taxes, just a little less than 1%. 10% would be 700, or almost 2% tax reduction. 15% would be 1.1 million and about a 3% reduction. Fire department, the fire department is committing to protecting property, owners' investments, and promoting public health, safety, and welfare to enhance the quality of life in our city. Potential reductions. The department responded to 5,011 alarms in 2016. Thankfully, only 10 of those were for working fires, equalling 0.2% of all calls received. The city began exploring potential methods to improve the delivery of services from LBFD, one of the only two paid fire departments, and the paramedics were very instrumental in that because they came in at a much cheaper cost. We're billing for all of their services, so that, that does bring in money for the city. Police department provides all facets of law enforcement. We're very fortunate, we have a full-service police department from patrol, fully investigative functions. The scope of duties also includes a fully functioning traffic division, warrants and identification, and training bureau, detectives, and patrol. Last year, the department responded to 18,000 calls in 2017, had 580 arrests, 145 DWI arrests in a 1.5 square mile town, city, and responded to 958 motor vehicle accidents. By the way, we were only one of the few communities to go down in motor vehicle crashes in, in last year because of all the distracted driving accidents that have been occurring almost everywhere else, or an uptick in, in crashes. Cost efficiency has been enhanced in many ways, including grants with the New York State Department of Justice, NCPD, Nassau County District Attorney. Department has reduced its force size to the lowest level in history. The lowest we were in my 40 career prior to my administration was at 80, and we're now down to 70. We have two full-time staff that were reduced. The 10th officer just recently left. The department is aggressively pursuing technological advances to cut costs, but one of the things that was cut from the capital budget was a whole bunch of technology stuff. So it's the yin and yang of, of government that, of mathematics, that if you're looking to go in a certain direction, buying technology to cut your costs, and then you do away with the technology because you don't have the money in the bond, then it, it hampers that objective. Special events. There are many special events that result in net loss for the city. Associated event costs include public works, recreation, police, and overtime. Right now, each of these events costs over $20,000 annually. Summer concert series is closer to 50. Irish Day is closer to 100. Fall festival, Independence Day fireworks. We try to offset some of that with sponsorships. Polar Bear is a huge event. You see a ton of workers, city workers out there. Pride Weekend. Last year, Pride Weekend cost us about $150,000, which was fully reimbursable. This year, the governor approved $50,000. So there's going to be a tally of the events there. The Michelle O'Neill volleyball tournament is a very, very popular tournament, and Family Fun in the Park is, is another great program where we have in the parks. And it may become a time where we're going to have to ask these philanthropic charities... And it may become a time where we're going to have to ask these philanthropic charities to pay our expenses. You know, instead of giving, instead of collecting a half a million dollars for a charity, maybe they collect 450,000, they offset our costs and it's a fairer way to go. And then there would be much less reluctance to having these special events, because if, you know, they're cost neutral. Corporation Council has prepared a document, a change to the charter, which would actually enact legislation that would make events be cost neutral, or they wouldn't be allowed by law. Increasing revenue. Ms. Darcy, we weren't thinking about this, but we will give you full credit for it. But one of the things we are looking at is parking meters. Parking meters are a very effective thing, and one of the ideas that I really like for parking meters, and I want to bring it out at this venue, is if you are a city resident and you buy a city resident parking sticker that you can use in the West End or East End lots, we would also make that exempt you from the meters. So if you buy your parking sticker, you can park at the meters in town. We're giving some thought, some creative ways to bring in money for the city. Pouring or naming rights, I'd love to see, and I'll take a chance on the fans of the minor league team, the Islanders, and say, we could love to have the New York Ranger ice skating rink at a million dollars a year, if that could work. Energy efficiency, smart development, these are all things we have to do. We have to get the Hebrew Academy from a tax-exempt school to a taxable entity on our tax rolls, a developed taxable entity. Installation of parking meters in the central business district, fully, and I dare anyone tell me that they can always find a parking spot on Park Avenue, because I can't. No, no, you've got to wait till the end. So the 50% per hour, the city would see 661,000 annual revenue, if charged 75, over a million. And this doesn't include the cost of installation, but we have interviewed a number of parking meter consultants, and they do work with you. Pouring naming rights, exclusive rights to distributors by the Shogus Board, or naming rights to public property. It's a controversial issue, but in desperate times, call for desperate measures. Every city-owned roof should be seen as a potential asset for revenue generating solar panels. There has been a big push by the Fed and the state to subsidize solar energy, so we need to get onto that bandwidth and see if we can recoup some money on that. The city's tax base must be expanded through smart, diligent development. City must adopt a comprehensive plan, and we keep doing this. The comprehensive plan and the zoning need to go, so we enable growth and we do smart development. And thank you.
Ms. Santana?
Commissioner, Commissioner, why don't we just get the questions from the council first?
They want to go council first.
Can we take this down?
The council first.
All right. Are there any questions from the council? No? No? One second, Councilman Bendo has some questions. Okay. No, nobody had any questions. Why don't you just state your name for the record?
Lucy Santana. My question is about the parking meters. Instead of busting up the sidewalks and putting these little meters in, why can't we do our parking like Rockville Center does? And just make the spots and number them and let people deposit them? Then it doesn't take up so much space on the sidewalk.
We have a plan in place that does exactly that. We looked at this several years ago. We had a parking consultant that came in and came up with a central meter plan for the downtown district that would, we'd have central meters similar to what we have in Long Island Railroad Station, where the spaces would be numbered, you'd go to the nearest kiosk.
Right.
You'd enter in your space number, and you could put in your credit card, or you can pay by cash, and then we wouldn't have to put meters at every, in every spot. We would put probably like 3 meters per block.
And we put the meters at the intersections so that it forces the motorists into the crosswalk, which enhances safety.
We would have to put it out for RFP and see what different options are available to us, because there's different ways of capturing more money.
I just saw the parking meter on the.
Yeah, no, I think that's just for conceptualizing, do we want parking meters?
It takes space away from the sidewalk.
Right.
And I don't want the sidewalks busted up because God knows when they'll get fixed again.
Right.
So I just figured it would be better that way.
The only place we would use single-spaced meters would be in the handicap spaces, so they wouldn't have, so people wouldn't have to, if they're not able to travel to the central meter, that's the only place we would. You may see a couple of, in the plan, a few single-head meters, but they would be few and far between.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adamo? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Karen Adamo, 74 Forrester Street. Okay, first of all, about the parking kiosk, which I think is the best idea, I agree. Would they be limited to a certain number of hours, or would they be like an all-day meter?
I think right now it's just a conceptual idea of would we want to see parking meters? Is it time to, you know, with everybody else uses parking meters? But I would think it would be something in the date, during the general business hours and not during the evening. That would just be my instinct.
Not the whole day, because we're still going to have the same problem.
Right.
People staying there all day.
Right. You want to keep the cars rotating so that businesses can get their customers in and out. Right.
I know it's a little bit of a hardship for the employees, but you know, I think it would be very helpful. Anyway, the second question I have is how much are the parking meter, how much are the parking permits for the lots now?
Right now, they're $50.
All right. I thought it was outrageous at $50 when a previous administration's, we spent $650,000, I believe it was, over a period of five years to pave and rent the properties, and I just don't think $50 is nearly enough money.
We still lose money, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Because there aren't that many lots. I mean, it's not like there's lots all over town. And secondly, the permit, as I said, if it's going to be used for, what did we say? It could be used for also, if you have the permit?
You'd be exempt from the meters.
Right, exempt from the meters. I mean, that's worth a lot more than $50. I'm sorry, you know, I mean, it really is. I would pay, I would pay $100 at least for a permit like that.
Okay.
Or I would, or.
Please let the speaker speak.
I would ride my bike, or I would park at the parking meter and walk around town and do all my errands at once.
Thank you.
And the third thing, the question I have about real estate taxes, is we have these raised homes, and a lot of them have added second stories. Now, I know the basement, the garage floor is not supposed to be counted as square footage being in real estate. I mean, you're not covered by insurance, you're not technically supposed to use it, even though we know there's a few rentals going on. Has that extra tax come into our coffers yet? I know it's still kind of early, kind of new.
I think I'll ask our assessor.
Yes, oh, good. You're here, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Every house that's lifted is, in the city of Long Beach, is appraised with the garage, the unfinished basement, the rec room, or the carport. And it's added to the value.
Oh, that is included in square footage?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the square footage of the house, but valued as an amenity of the house.
Okay. No, but the question is, have we started to receive these extra taxes from all these houses?
Starting, I think, with like the 2014, 2015 tax roll.
And that hasn't helped? I mean, there's been so many raised houses and extra square footage.
It has helped.
The house next door to me has two extra floors, and one's supposed to be for mechanicals, and yet there's a little deck with chairs and lights outside for the mechanicals. So I know there's been a lot of, you know, leeway with these extra floors and extra square footage. That should count for something.
Every house that they construction renovated that's complete has been valued and is assessed accordingly.
But the monies that are coming in, that's not helping us that much?
It offsets any tax increase somewhat.
Have we seen a jump in the real estate taxes that the city is collecting?
Right. I guess that's the question.
From the increase in value of the homes?
We've seen a sense of value, but the state every year changes the equalization rate of the city, so every year it kind of fluctuates.
Yeah, I don't, okay.
So the way that helps the city is that every year, your assessed value goes up related to those taxpayers. So then when we talk about the tax cap, everybody talks about 2% tax cap, it's capped at 2%. The reason why the city's tax cap this year is 2.65% is because on top of the 2% you're allowed, you get what's called a tax-based growth factor, which allows you to increase your levy for the increase in assessed value for new taxpayers, for improved properties, for properties that come back on the rolls if they're tax-exempt and then sold to a taxable entity. And this year, the city got a 0.65% increase in its tax levy allowable for items like that. So yes, it does help every year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Eddie Verona, and I have documents for the council I'd like to submit.
Can you pass one down to?
At the last city council meeting, President Aramo asked residents to review the budget and proposed cuts, so I did just that. This budget, which is ironically labeled sustainable, responsible, and defensible, while it is none of those things. This budget clearly does not try to find efficiencies, and it puts the burden unnecessarily on the taxpayer. So I asked the city council to review the following cuts. First, a reduction in city council pay. When financial problems happen in the private sector, top-level administrators take the first pay cut. City councils should have their pay cut before any employee gets laid off. We should also save $110,000 by eliminating one of the three additional corporation council lawyers and ending the $25,000 raise for the corporation council. Budgeted for more than $500,000 is consulting fees for the corporation council, which should also be eliminated. We should also have a 2/3 reduction in postage. The large politically motivated and unnecessary mailings to make the city council look good need to be eliminated. Only necessary mailings should be mailed to save the taxpayers' money. We should save $120,000 by having a 10% cut to police overtime. We have one of the highest-paid police forces in New York State. This is because, in a large part, of unnecessary overtime, which should be cut. Finally, I call a 10% cut in the police commissioner's salary. The police commissioner of New York City makes less than the police commissioner of Long Beach, despite there being more cops in New York City than people in Long Beach. These cuts and others I've submitted to the city council will save an estimated $1.4 As stated earlier, Long Beach has some of the highest-paid police officers in New York State. Using Newsday data, I calculated the median salary of police officers is $165,000. While, as President Mooney stated last meeting, the median salary for CSEA workers is $50,000. The city council has some nerve trying to lay off hard-working CSEA workers who live check to check while keeping top-level administrators and top-paying police officers. CSEA workers and the taxpayers are not political pawns. I stand with CSEA and the taxpayer against this ridiculous budget that benefits a select elite and hurts the hard-working taxpayer and CSEA member. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. And there's no proposals to lay off any CSEA. Yes, Mr. Darcy.
That's a hard act to follow. Young man, Patrick Garcia, 225 West Park Avenue. These police officers and firefighters work hard for their money. They don't know if they're going to go home at night or get shot in the car. Okay? So you want to put on a uniform and go out there, put on a badge, let's see how tough you are.
Mr. Darcy.
He's doing two jobs, this commissioner.
Mr. Darcy.
All right. Let's get back to the parking meters, okay?
Go ahead.
I don't want to see, I don't want to see any law enforcement officers had their dreams shattered by getting laid off. If I tell you if I could raise $300,000, close to $300,000 in 30 days, you would never believe this. I got people chasing me on the street, thanks Patty Business owner, thanks a lot, thanks a lot. I didn't know this about, they used to go and approve the meters until Mr. Taggney said. I can't, I said, what are you talking about? The parking meters. I says, yeah, they got a pair. Oh, thanks, they're all running out. I'm hiding from them now, because they're so happy that they're going to have business. Now, Mr. Taggney knows, he grew up here, I grew up here. From New York Avenue, entire all Broadway, all the way up to Monroe, there used to be meters. Don't put no meters there. You use those parking stickers, just like the West End lots, the parking permit stickers. I thought they were $65. Those are renters, getting free parking, they clean up the streets, the city workers, they reasphalt, the taxpayers of the city got to pay for all that. And then they invite their friends out, there's never any parking here. Winter, snow, summer, spring, fall. Immediately put up signs, permit parking only. Within 30 days, every one of those people had to buy a permit. You don't have to put meters there. You don't. All those people that live along Broadway, get the renters and the landlords, that's a business when you're a landlord, are making money. They're making a lot of money. So if they're a guest, treat them like one. Parking stickers on their cars, immediately, you'll raise. And don't lay off any police officers, you destroy their dreams. These kids worked hard, they go through the academy, these young men. Pass the test, all right?
Let him finish his time, please.
They keep the city.
Everyone's entitled to three minutes.
When you call the police officer, he's going to respond. You want layoffs, he's not going to respond. You'll be up here complaining about the delay in the response.
Please be respectful, let everyone have their three minutes. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. Next comment? Comments on the budget? Is it Patty? Mr. Darcy? Thank you for your comments. Ms. Goodman?
Hi, still Mona Goodman. I did not catch the name of the young gentleman who was up here speaking. But I have to say, he had some good ideas. Let me tell you, without yelling, what I, I think he had a great start, here's a couple more ideas.
Please, thank you.
This budget that you're going to pass, please, you cannot give any raises other than contractual raises, because in austerity budget, and this is basically what you're proposing, an austerity budget, no raises. You know, I.
As you know, it's a small part of the budget, but I understand.
I think I remember you saying it's 1%.
I believe so. I believe so, yeah.
Well, that means that it'll be 11 point something percent.
0.1%. 0.1%. But, but, but yes.
Okay.
But yes.
You know, in good conscience.
Yeah.
When we sat on the council and we were faced with financial problems, because it's not just you, it happens all the time to every municipality, we cut our own city council salaries. You know, it would be a very nice gesture if some department heads, and sorry, Commissioner Tagney, you too, if you could please reduce your salaries. You know, if, if what you're saying is true, that we're really in a tremendous crisis, then that's what we need to do. You tighten your belt, you don't create more positions, you look for efficiencies in government. Jobs that are overlapping or have the same responsibilities, you have to eliminate them. And that's just the start. You know, I don't wanna go through every painful scenario that could exist, but, you know, 12% is just not something that the taxpayers can afford, quite honestly, because taxes never go down, they only go up. And if it, you know, I, I am sorry, I got pulled outside when Mr. Tagney was talking about people contrib, employees contributing to their health care costs. I, I kinda missed it. I hope that's something that you're considering. I know when I sat on the council, I assume it's still the same, that you have the option of getting health care coverage. Or, or, you know, I was, when I sat, I was covered by my job, so I did not take the health care coverage. But if that's something that, you know, either you guys can contribute towards or don't take, you know, there's another place. I see my three minutes are up. I'm asking you to do everything you can to trim. Thank you.
All exempt employees do participate and pay into their health care. But most of the employees, as you know, are contractual, and none of those do, although I believe future CSEA, right? Future CSEA, new hires, will eventually participate and pay for their health care.
But do the exempts pay towards their health care?
Yeah, for, since 2012.
And city council members?
I don't, I don't take it.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't take it.
I think most of us have health insurance through our other positions.
But I think it would be, because it's exempt.
But we would have the same 10% requirements, I believe, that exempt employees would have as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman.
Thank you.
I think, I'm, just for the sake of changing it up. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. John Ashmead, 38 East Beach Street, Long Beach. First, I just wanted to make a comment. There was reference in city manager Tagney's.
Use a microphone, please.
Hello? There were some references in the PowerPoint presentation by city manager Tagney regarding the comptroller's letter, and I just wanted to add some of that. These statements are also from the May New York State Comptroller Letter. He did say, "Based on the results of our review, except for the matters described in this letter," and that, I think, the part that might have been left out of the presentation. "We found that the significant revenue and expenditure projections in the proposed budget are reasonable." He also said that the city is in significant financial distress, and its condition has been deteriorating over recent years. He also said that, "Based on our review of the proposed budget," that's this budget, "city officials continue to take actions that are detrimental to the city's financial position. It is imperative that officials address the city's declining financial condition during this current budget cycle." There were other comments in that letter talking about the city's weak financial condition, so I don't wanna have us putting lipstick on that pig. Some other comments about the budget specifically. Two weeks ago, one of the residents here during the budget discussions made the recommendation that the council and the city management go to all department heads and tell them they have to cut their budget by 5%. That is certainly an approach, it's across-the-board cuts, and if you don't wanna make decisions on an individualized cuts that add up to a lot, that is an approach that you could take. Another approach is across-the-board overtime reduction, which is one that if you don't wanna make the difficult decisions on an item, by item basis, you can make those decisions. And people may not like that ultimately. In a year from now, we could change it if that's what people want. But we don't have the money now. We run structural deficits every year. The FEMA spigot has basically stopped, and our debt has more than doubled in the last six years, and we are staring the $50 million Haberman judgment in the face. In short, if you can't make the hard decisions on an item-by-item basis in a meaningful way, and I understand that, it's difficult, these are friends and neighbors that are employed by the city, that it affects them directly. These are high-level solutions that might force us to tighten our belt, and then we could see what happens, and that includes the residents could see. To the extent services were reduced at the end of the year, we'll have this discussion next year, and people will offer their opinions. And I think that's a way to do it. I think letting go low-paid sanitation workers, or cutting other low-paid workers, or not buying new planters, is avoiding the real issues, and we've gotta hit the hard issues. I know, and I appreciate it. I don't want your job. It's easier because stuff flows downhill and all, but that's not the answer, and I would hope that you would take some approach that actually makes meaningful cuts. And if that means austerity, so be it, and we could all revisit this next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since the, Mr. Ashmead brought up the comptroller's letter, we are being officially handed it, although we all have seen it. I think the clerk has informed me that he's officially supposed to hand it to us, and that, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
As it says in the end of the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Centeno.
She already spoke.
Oh, you already spoke, Ms. Centeno.
You already had your three minutes, Ms. Centeno. You already had your three minutes.
No, I'm, I.
You already had your three minutes. You were the first speaker on this public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Please, come on up. Please just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Kelly Foreman, 522 Shore. So I know there's been a lot of conversation about the weekend bus service as one of the potential ways to cut some of the expense. I was curious, on the list of proposed budget options, what is the criteria and the strategy for those decisions? I know there were some recommendations, but by which way are we gonna decide those things?
How do we? I think the city council would decide.
Is there a criteria that we're privy to, to kind of understand the impact to the community?
So we would do what's called an errata sheet, which is amendments to the budget, and then we would have to pass the budget with the errata sheet, or if it gets voted down, the budget, then the errata sheet gets voted down as well. I think the police commissioner will put up the highest-value stuff, is that?
Yes.
I think we asked him to, you know, what are the big-ticket items is really what we had asked him to present.
Okay. Do we have any sense of the weekend ridership of the public bus transportation system?
We, we do, yes. Please introduce yourself.
Brendan Costello, Director of Transportation. On Saturdays, ridership averages about 280 people, so, and on Sundays, approximately 260.
And is that based on fares that are calculated?
It's based on trips. So it could be one person taking two trips, one person taking three trips.
Okay. I was trying to just assess the volume of the issue to see if there's a concern, because I know, you know, it's probably not a surprise to anybody here that there's not a very consistent collection of the fare, so I think it's probably potentially an understated number relative to who might be using the rides on the weekend. I just bring it up because I'm curious if that's part of the proposal, to keep that weekend service off indefinitely, or is that gonna be restored?
I think all the city council members have expressed the desire to put the bus service back into service, so.
County Executive Karen has freed up $150,000 that the county owed us. We are anticipating receiving that money on Friday when we will, when I will restore the bus service.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If I can just, I just wanna, I just wanna answer, if I, if I can, I just wanna answer your question. You had asked what goes into, are there specific criteria or factors? I think that each of us has our own way of approaching how we deal with this budget, and some of it is speaking to residents, some of it is emails that we receive from other people, comments that are made here, our analysis of either visiting departments or going and speaking with different employees and department heads, and then just the general information that's in the budget. So I think it's a, I'll speak for myself, but I'm assuming it applies for everybody else. It's really a comprehensive analysis that each of us go through. It's a big responsibility, and while there isn't a specific list that is like factors that we consider, I think everybody kinda takes all of those things into account, particularly emails and communications that we receive from residents.
Yeah, I think that's great. And important thing. Thank you for that. I just, I love the transparency, and I'd love to get more involved to understand it, because it's a net-net, trying to figure out how to make the best for the most and care for those that might not have a voice as well. So I appreciate that.
So just to address something.
I would certainly encourage you to reach out, an email, and, I mean, all of us are available and respond.
I just wanted to address something you brought about fare collection. We've spoken in the past about a different way of collecting fares. Is that in any of the?
Right, we're in the process of procuring the fare boxes.
What was that?
We're in the process of procuring the fare boxes. We just got the grant in December.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So we'll be collecting all those fares. Mr. Delory.
Good evening, Mike Delory, Long Beach. I'm just gonna go through the last five years of the audit of the local school governments and data. In 2014, overtime salaries are budgeted $2.2 million, despite averaging $2.9 million for the last five years. Ensure that necessary internal controls are in place and operating effectively to control overtime costs. May 2015, overtime salaries are budgeted $2.1 million, despite averaging over $2.9 million. Key recommendations: ensure that necessary internal controls are in place and operating effectively to control overtime costs. May 2016, overtime salaries are budgeted $2.3 million, despite costs averaging again $2.9 million for the last five years. Key recommendations: ensure that necessary internal controls are in place and are operating effectively to control overtime costs. May 2017. Key findings: they did not modify overtime appropriations. As of March 31st, overtime expenditures were $2.6 million, exceeding the adopted budget $5.5 million. Now, moving on to May of 2018. They did not modify overtime appropriations. As of March 31st, 2018, overtime expenditures were $2.98 million, exceeding the adopted budget by $246,216. What makes me feel confident as a taxpayer or resident that the last five years of recommendations that have given to this council, you could exclude Mr. Bendo, Ms. Diamond, because encompassing five years, I don't have confidence that my tax dollars are being managed effectively. I don't know what, I don't know what the internal controls are, but I could tell you this. If I was a department head and I was given a budget, and I asked for a budget, and it was given to me, I would damn well sure make sure that I manage that budget. Or I would, if I was the boss, I would say, "Call you to the office. What's going on? Why do you need it?" You can't run a business this way. And I look at this government as a business. I pay into it, I expect little in return. I don't complain. Parking fees, they should be at least 100. You park up and down Broadway in the summertime, it's a freebie, it's a free-for-all. Make it 200. You're giving stuff away. You know, it's, it's very easy, and as far as health care, these things should have been decided a long time ago, because health care, this didn't just happen. Thank you.
Just, can I just wanna speak to?
Go ahead.
Mr. Delory, before you sit down, I think it's important for everyone to understand the role of government. Our role is not to micromanage any department within the city. We're a governing body, so that means that we really work towards creating positive change through policy. Now, we do have the opportunity to speak to certain issues, but we don't actually come in on a Friday and try to micromanage any of the departments. However, I can say this, and you may recall, and apparently maybe you've forgotten, that last year, during the budget, when we had conversations up here right before the vote, that was a part of what I asked for. And there were several other people that also had that same conversation with respect to fiscal responsibility. And so unfortunately, we find ourselves here tonight because of the failure of the former management to engage in that fiscal responsibility in terms of holding people accountable within the various departments. I think, based on whatever it is that you've raised tonight, I think you've been hearing from the council for the past two months now to say that we're moving in a different direction. We're moving in a direction where accountability will be a high priority. And so I hope that that answers your question.
Ms. Egan. Name and address.
Nora Egan. Ms. Moore, to follow on your statement of accountability. I'm gonna bring up again what I brought up last week or two weeks ago about the payout separation documents, though you said you only saw the one of Jack Schnermer that night. Has everybody since seen everybody's payout documents?
Can you just clarify?
The payouts, the separation payments, has everybody seen the documents belonging to every?
The document, or is this an extension of the document that everyone has seen based on?
No, no, no. Everybody's, like Mr. Auguste sees everybody else that was listed on the payouts.
In terms of dates, when they were paid out?
Yes, and when they were signed, who signed them?
No.
Who authorized? Can I ask you, why have you not seen them?
I have no idea.
Have you seen them?
I can't speak to it.
I have not, but I know that they've all been delivered for the past, I don't know if it's six or 10 years, to the comptroller's office for audit and review.
To which comptroller's office?
The state.
No, the state didn't even, wasn't even aware of Mr. Schnermer's one. I personally sent it to the state's office.
Everything has been sent.
So that's not true, that they haven't?
Everything was sent.
When's it sent? The one that I sent? He has not seen the other ones. He hasn't seen Mr. Auguste sees.
Everything has, has been sent as of last week.
As of last week?
Correct.
Okay, so not for the past couple of years, as you just said?
Documents for the last couple of years have been delivered.
Okay.
So instead of just looking at one specific payment, the city council asked them to look at the last six or seven years of all the payments that have been done to all employees, union, non-union, exempt, not exempt, contracted, not contracted. Let's look at everything, let's see what's going on, and come up with a different plan going forward.
Okay, and they're looking at the signatures of who signed them?
They have back, as President Aramo noted, they have back six years.
Okay. And the one that I'm specifically asking about is the one signed for Jack Schnermer with Mr. Robinson that signed it?
Correct. They have it.
They have it, yeah. And so, to me, that is fraud, and, Mr. Tagney, I'm sorry to interrupt you if you're on your phone. You, thank you. As our police commissioner, you have to, okay, I'll wait till you look at me. Thank you. As our police commissioner, you know, wearing your loyal hat, don't you think that you should be investigating the fraudulent part of it on Mr. Robinson's side of signing that document?
I, I question your legal expertise and the definition of fraud.
I'm sorry?
I question your legal expertise. Fraud is a very serious accusation. After looking at what I've seen, I do not believe there was any fraud. There's a thing called a mens rea, which is your mental culpable state. There was no mens rea in this incident.
Can you just?
That's the law.
But who, can you just tell me who, like, he had authorization to sign the document?
He's the deputy city.
He was the deputy city manager at the time, he's the deputy city manager now. I was not in the office at the time. I had nothing to do with it. I don't think there was anything wrong with him signing it. I think it would have been more prudent on Mr. Schnermer to have me as the acting city manager, or even possibly Corporation Council sign it, but I can't speak for him.
But have you looked into the matter in the last couple of weeks?
I looked into it.
Because you seem shocked when I?
I looked into it when it happened, and you sent me the emails demanding his discipline, and I didn't find anything wrong.
Okay, well, you didn't respond to that, saying that you didn't find anything wrong.
You sent numerous emails.
Yes.
I can't spend all day answering just your emails.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Lester. I'll get you next, sir, and you next, ma'am.
Before he comes up, I'd like to follow up. I asked for the payout sheets for all the employees that got payouts this year last month, and I still have not received them. Why is that?
I don't have them.
Okay, so, well, then, let's go down, if we're going to go down this path. As the acting city manager, do the city employees report to you?
Yes.
So if you instruct the employees to provide those sheets to the council, they should?
Yes.
Okay, and you in turn report to the council?
Yes.
So if the council says they want these sheets, why haven't we gotten them?
I haven't got the sheets.
When, when will we have them?
I'll let, I'll research it and let you know tomorrow.
Can I go to the class?
You and I, you and I had a phone conversation the day before you went on vacation about this, and you were going to leave a note for the staff to do it while you were gone and to get them. That did not happen.
That's correct.
Why? No accountability.
Look, at this point, it's, it's coming across that this information is being withheld intentionally.
Absolutely.
It was, it was one thing when I was in the audience and coming up here and you could ignore me, which happened often, but as a member of the council now, my requests are not rhetorical. I'm doing them for a reason. I'm a representative of them. And to do that job, I need information, and if information's being withheld, then we have a problem. I mean, do I have to go, I mean, do I have to foil to get information to do my job?
Yes.
Can we, can we just, can by the end of the week, we get these together and get them out to the rest of the council?
Yes. Can someone access it tonight for him or in City Hall? A month ago. We were able to cut buses overnight. This is a disgrace. This is really a disgrace.
Mr. Lester.
Roy Lester, 72 Boyd. John, I have to admit, I'm shocked at what you just said. I've been in public service for years. The idea that you can make the copies and send them to the comptroller's office and not give the city council copies is unbelievable. I don't know how this government works. We elected you to, and I don't call it micromanaging, Ms. Moore, we elected you to watch over things.
Yes.
And for you to be denied these copies when they had time to make copies and send them to the comptroller's office is unbelievable. And I'm hoping, as our elected representative, you don't just sit and accept that as an answer. It's, in all my years, this is one of the most egregious abuse of powers I've seen. I can understand getting them together, it might have taken a while, but the fact that they were copies made and sent upstate, and they couldn't give them to you and to Ms. Moore. You requested them too, didn't you? And they couldn't give them to you?
The entire council, sir.
It's what?
The entire council.
You all requested it?
Yeah, the request was made for all the council to receive it.
And you couldn't get copies?
We have not received them, no.
And that doesn't bother you, Mr. Aramo?
It does bother me. But can we stick to the topic and go for the budget? Thank you.
Mr. Tagney, you did mention that there was, you had budgeted for $1 million in fees that didn't come in. What fees were those?
I already budgeted for fees.
That was, that was the previous year's budget, I believe it was the super block property for Stormwater runoff, I think, right?
Yes. So that was budgeted even though, I mean, the super block was kind of stalled before last year's budget? It was still budgeted? All right, whatever. Also, you mentioned that you were down nine officers and two full-time, and yet when you compare last year's budget to this year's budget, you had 10 police sergeants, now you have 12. You did come down from 45 police officers to 43, but you did double the timekeeper from one to two. When were the nine officers cut and the two full-time people?
2012.
Oh, okay. So since then, it's been a steady increase again? The police department?
No, they were cut and they remained cut.
No, no, what I'm saying is the budgets continue to rise. It's rising about what, half a million this year, not counting benefits?
Well, there's contractual raises that came in. There was an arbitration award that was about a 22% raise in 2014.
22% raise?
22%, it covered eight years. There was a agreement with the color of remaining officers.
You said enough. I got it, I got it. And I have another question. Why do we need now in the central administration a director of transit operations when we didn't need that before?
I did a lot of cleaning up in this budget. There was, when people talk about some of the money that was given to the corporation council, that would, there was no raise given. That was a stipend that they were given. I incorporated that into salary to be more transparent. There was the director, that, that position itself was in three different budget lines. It's all now in one budget line to be more transparent. The timekeeper in the police department was, is my secretary. We've eliminated that secretary position, and that's what, and that was to be more transparent.
Okay, and is it possible to find out who's in these positions? And I guess what's bothering myself and a lot of people?
You mentioned three positions, four positions. The nine cops that are gone?
In, in the budget, there are a lot of positions. And I guess what's bothering me and a lot of people, it seems that people are in several positions. They're being paid in several positions.
Is that true?
I do not believe that's the case any longer. When I went through the budget, I did search that. I don't think I missed any, but I, I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
If I could follow up on that. So the director of transit operations and the assistant city manager are two separate people in the budget, but they're the same person physically, correct?
Yes.
So that person is on two separate line items?
I'm not sure of that.
So is the director of transit operations Mike Robinson?
Yes.
Is the assistant city manager right, Mike Robinson?
Yes, but I'm not, I, there's a thousand lines in the budget. I don't remember every line by heart, but I will check that. But I believe I put them all under one name.
He's, right now in the budget, he's collecting two salaries.
Three.
At least, that I know of.
Assistant city manager one.
He gets $22,000, or I'm going off the top of my head, as assistant city manager, and then 100 and something for what's basically a duplicate position.
Okay. I don't think there's a third.
I don't know if he has a third.
I was gonna, I'm sorry, I was going to the back. Yes, sir.
And then I was going to go behind him.
Hi, Michael Graham, Long Beach. I have a question. 2012, I was laid off as a city employee. I came to City Hall 30 days straight, could talk to no one. I find it ironic that you won't look into the allegations of those checks being signed for Jack, but you sure as hell investigated what was going on with me. And what did you find? Mr. Graham did nothing wrong, so from 2012 to 2000 and now, I suffered. So those who are doing wrong up there, I think they should suffer too. I have a pacemaker behind this crap. I lost my family. I did nothing wrong. So those who are up here doing wrong, getting extra money, should go to jail. Y'all punished me. I slept in a bandit house for five and a half years. What do you have to say about that? You know what it's like to sleep in a bandit house when it's cold? And now I have a damn pacemaker in my chest because of the damn aggravation, and I didn't do nothing wrong. I'm an army vet. How many of y'all are veterans in here? And once again, I would like to know how come it took so long? You guys would fastly accuse me of making a bomb and threatening the city manager. Oh yeah, I'll be locked the hell up. So once again, I would like to see you investigate. You, you're getting an extra paycheck. You right here, this guy right here too, he should be punished. You receiving extra money?
Yeah.
And then you have the audacity to give me my job back at $10 an hour when I left making 20 with benefits? Who's going to pay my health care bills? Who's paying my child support? You know what it's like to have bills you can't pay for five and a half fucking years? You guys are a disgrace.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Kathryn Demanda, I live in Long Beach. I'd like to follow up on some questions about the time sheets. I'm sorry.
This is a hearing about the budget, so just keep it budget-related.
I understand, and it is a budget item. So when the separation payouts were made and the paperwork was compiled, I did happen to see Jack's sheet, and I also happened to see that there was nothing filled in. If that separation payout on vacation time and sick time, how come they weren't filled in? Who vetted that and who corrected it? Who has that on record? Who has his time sheets and his vacation time and his sick time?
Everything goes through payroll, but?
It goes through payroll, but there are spaces for it. On that sheet, everything is blank. Everything is blank but a figure of 108,000 and a signature. Three signatures, which you guys did not recognize two weeks ago. So why wasn't it filled in and why was it blessed? Why was the checks cut? How come nobody looked at it?
It didn't, it doesn't, it wasn't?
And I'd also like some clarity, if you don't mind, on what does Michael Robinson do here exactly? Because the last time I checked, he was the treasurer. So now you're saying he's the deputy city? Okay. I read the charter, and only the acting city manager with a letter on file is allowed to do what he did. Is there a letter on file for him during that period of time? Was there?
I do not believe so.
There wasn't. Who would have been responsible for cutting such a letter and making sure it was on file with the clerk?
The city manager.
Would that have been you or Jack?
Jack.
Okay, so at that time, it's Jack?
Yes.
But Michael Robinson did not have that letter on file?
I do not believe so.
So the only person who had the authority to sign that would have been you?
Correct.
And you weren't there?
No, I was the acting city manager.
I'm saying, but you were not the person who signed the check. You weren't available to sign the check?
That's correct. No, no, I don't, I didn't know anything about the check.
You didn't know anything about it, but now you see that there's a blank sheet with nothing filled in but just "give this man money," and you don't see a cause for an investigation because of mens rea?
No, there's a lot of people that called for an investigation, and I'm not going to interfere in the investigation.
You're not going to interfere in the investigation?
Yes.
So the investigation can continue?
Outside agencies are doing investigations.
Okay, so these other sheets that made payouts to other people, you're not going to investigate that? You don't know who signed those?
I haven't seen any other sheets.
You haven't seen any of the sheets?
The only sheet I saw was the one that was presented here.
What about the sheet for Mr. Agostis' here?
He's part of none.
But he's still here. It's a separation payment, so he signed it.
He asked if I saw the sheets. I didn't see any other sheets.
You didn't, you didn't see any other sheets?
I didn't sign any sheets?
You didn't sign any sheets. So who did? How did all this money get from one place to another? I mean, this is a significant budget question because we're talking about, what, $350,000 that nobody can account for how it moved from one account into 11 other accounts? No?
No, I think the previous city manager, the previous city manager authorized.
You just, you just said, hey, I'm going to cash in some cash? Money?
No, that's not what I said at all.
That's not what happened?
No, no, Mr. Demanda, that's not what I said at all.
That's not what you said. Okay, I'm sorry, repeat yourself.
No, you asked me if that's what I said, and I said, no. As a matter of fact, at the last meeting, I explained my situation.
But you're still here.
So I'm not going to, I'm not going to try and speak over you, so, I realize that, but I almost left in December and went.
So the answer to your question was who authorized it and who paid it was the previous city manager, except for his own payments?
Correct. So nobody, you're saying nobody? Nobody of any authority? And you don't know who signed the other sheets?
The city manager has the sole authority, which is why we gave all the sheets to the comptroller for the last six years.
For review. I actually read the letter, and they were reserving any opinion on the legality of such a practice. That was in that letter.
Right.
So they're just going to count the money and make sure that it moved from one account to the other.
No, no, they're going to make sure everything is kept. My understanding, my understanding is that they're going to make sure everything was calculated properly.
Calculated properly.
And then what happens with, if they come back and say these were not calculated properly, well then that may be another issue that the comptroller can't answer.
No, the comptroller doesn't answer questions on legality.
Right, I understand that. But if they found that things were calculated improperly, then we have another question. But first, we need to figure out if it was calculated improperly.
Okay, but how can you do that if the sheet was blank? Okay, thank you.
I have not seen the sheet.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Please stick, name and address, and please stick to the budget topic. Thank you.
Of course. John McNally, City of Long Beach. I'm going to stick with a bunch of the same themes, if you don't mind. So during the campaign, Councilman Bendo floated the idea of a real estate transfer tax, and I know for a fact that he's asked corporate counsel to research it and come up with proposals. So on the first theme of accountability, where does that stand?
Well, that's, of course, between me and my clients, but I answered that question very early on.
Could you repeat it for me then, please? Or, I mean, if you want to break the attorney-client privilege, Bendo, please feel free.
I couldn't. Obviously, it's not something that's come up for legislation, so I'm not in a position to divulge that, but I?
Have you followed up with Councilman Bendo on this issue at all?
Yeah, we spoke about it in a meeting in the city manager's office, I remember.
Recently?
Uh, no, back then.
So when he asked you to do it, have you followed up on it since or followed up with him on that matter at all?
I know exactly what it requires, but it's convoluted and it will take a while. And I advise my clients appropriately on that.
Okay. Now I'll get to the more micro matter of things, and these are, I think, a continuation of hits on popular themes here tonight. So A1315 comptroller's office, deputy clerk, which was an exempt position, has been eliminated. And it looks like we've added the bookkeeper to the tune of 54,306 under a bargain position. So I guess my question on this one is, is that person, is, well, was the position advertised? Was there a test taken? And was there a list created? And was the person that is filling that position on the list?
Do you know which position is that?
What position?
We are on page 56. A1315 comptroller's office. Deputy comptroller now gone. Timekeeper, well, not timekeeper, no, sorry, bookkeeper added for 54,306.
Christie, is this a question for you, or is this? Would it be a question for you, Christie?
It's not a replacement position. The bookkeeper position is separate from the deputy comptroller position. As far as how it was filled, that's a question for civil service. That I can't answer.
So I'd appreciate a follow-up on that one was, you know, was there, you know, was there a test for it? Was the position advertised? And was there a list created to fill that? Along the same line, city clerk, A1410. It looks like we lost an exempt, an exempt deputy city clerk and added a cashier, which is a bargain position to the tune of 84,312. Was the position advertised? Was there a test? Did the person that got the position, were they on a list?
That's provisional... No, is that the provisional? No, that was a person that was in a title prior and just resumed the title.
That position, I didn't see in any of the previous four years' budgets when I reviewed it back in the history, though. So this is a long time ago that that person held that position?
Yes.
Okay, so we can just recreate a position after a number of years, even though it wasn't budgeted for or paid for in previous budgets?
Yes.
Okay. Same thing, next page, 57, A1671, central administration. Back to the popular theme of the director of transportation is a bargained one, is same three questions. Was the position advertised? Was there a test? Was the person on the list for a test? Top three.
It was a previous appointment and just restored to that previous appointment.
Okay. So that person had had that position for previous years? That position, isn't that what we talked about as a new position? Or am I incorrect in that one?
It's a new position, but it was a position that he had already held.
Okay. And since I've got a little extra time, I guess... I don't know if you've been stopping and going, I'm about out of time. I'm just curious as to who is responsible for creating the calculations that... Or the formula that then informs the payouts that have been in discussion for all these years and also moving forward?
City manager.
So the city manager.
What?
Sorry, Lightning just stole three seconds of my time.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand the question.
So, no, it was who proffered the formula that informs the payouts for the termination... Oh, you wanna do it, homie, I know.
You're saying... Go ahead, if I'm incorrect.
It's the comptroller's office. The comptroller's office gets a report from payroll regarding what times have accrued, and then they do the calculations.
Okay, so, but we know, like, just from reports in the paper of, you know, the formula is not adhered to the city code. And I think, you know, so I'm... And the city manager, former city manager is on record as saying the formula was applied evenly. So I'm curious to what that evenly means? Is that to all exempt employees regardless of political party? Is that to exempt employees and bargained employees, we're getting more than what was in their contracts? So that's... There's my question. You know, who devised the formula and, you know...
Just one question... Oh, I'm sorry. Legislative Ford, after Councilman Bendo?
Is there an answer to that question? The president left a question there. His time is up, your time, and the answer wasn't up. An answer, is there not an answer?
I don't have an answer for the question.
Well, then someone should take it and go have an answer. Don't be, this is disrespectful to us.
That's not staring you down, sir. I'm not staring you down, sir.
If you could hold on just one second, Legislative Ford.
John, if you were gonna say something, I'll wait.
Can employees be put into new positions, especially ones with salary increases or given raises, if it wasn't in the approved budget that is in effect at the time?
Yes, it happens every year. The city manager is the recognized appointing authority under civil service law.
So raises could be given even though the money may not be in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to introduce you to Section 102A of the Charter. Payments and obligations prohibited. No payment shall be made... And excuse me, this is gonna take a minute. No payment shall be made or obligation incurred against any allotment or appropriation except in accordance with appropriations duly made and unless the city audit or first certifies that there is a sufficient unencumbered balance in such allotment or appropriation and that sufficient funds therfrom are or will be available to cover the claim or meet the obligation when it becomes due and payable. Any authorization of payment or incurring of obligation in violation of the provisions of this charter shall be void and any payment so made illegal. Payments made and obligations incurred shall include all promotions, salary increases, salary grade changes, and the filing of positions and collective bargaining agreements. Such actions shall be the cause for removal of any officer or employee who knowingly authorized the made such payment or incurred such obligation, and such officer or employee shall also be personally and individually liable to the city for any amount so paid. So the theme that seems to be recurring over and over again is, the Charter and the Code of Ordinances has been nothing more than a mere suggestion to our government. I'd still like a ruling if violating these is equating to breaking the law. I'm not a lawyer, I can't do that. But you just told me it's okay for the city manager to take liberties and do things like that. When the city charter makes it very clear... He cannot. The city charter is very clear on payout amounts. And it's interesting to note that there was some very interesting wording, including in our former city manager's op-ed, about the policy was applied evenly, which seems to imply that all the payments were potentially overpayments, which means to the tune potentially of millions of dollars over the last six years that were paid out and never should have been. And we seem to be taking a rather cavalier attitude about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bendo.
At some point, there has to be accountability. I get it, maybe the council did not know what was going on. It's entirely possible. But we know now. And we still seem to be turning a blind eye to it.
I don't think giving over all the reports for all the payouts to the New York State Comptroller is turning a blind eye. We need to know exactly what happened and for what amounts.
Did you give them to me?
I didn't give them to anybody.
I asked last month.
I didn't give them to anyone, John. I told you I don't have them. I told you I haven't seen them.
Okay. Somebody turned them over.
I did not. I didn't...
The comptroller's office turned them over.
The comptroller's office turned them over. There, see, now I know who turned them over. I didn't even know. Our comptroller's office. Is that... Okay. Did you... You didn't turn them over, right? It would be our deputy comptroller?
It would be the acting comptroller.
The acting comptroller?
Acting comptroller. Turned them all over. Any other questions about the budget? Or comments? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot. Ms. Legislative Ford, thank you.
Denise, 436 Ohio Avenue. John, I want to thank you very much, you know, for bringing this out. And I think it does, you know, I have actually budgeted stuff. But I think that your comments in regard to raises and salary jobs and positions and all, they have an impact on our budget and, you know, moving forward. And we look back at a lot of the things that have gone on. And I agree with you, John. I think that somehow or another, the previous administration decided that the city charter and the Code of Ordinances had nothing to do with the way he was gonna run the city. And I remember, I got something, and I have it in my phone, just on to follow you on not following what the city charter says, is that the city treasurer shall be the tax... The city tax collector. So in previous years, in previous administrations, the person who was a tax collector, and I believe that's a CSEA position, and John Mooney could probably correct me on that, that person would automatically become the city treasurer. And it just, to me, is very interesting that Jack Schnehrman decided to change that policy of his own free will without even checking the city charter five years ago, when all of these crazy payouts started happening, or so it seems, because we can't verify it because we don't have information. And in all fairness to all of you, you know, I sit in the legislature, and Anthony, you had made a comment two weeks ago that you can't look at every piece of paper. And I agree with you 100%, and I'll defend you on that, because you have to trust the people that are in... That you have in these positions. But when they voted down the bonds, you know, what is it, about a month ago? That trust was broken by the people that you put into those places. And the mere fact that this has been brought into question, and you sit here as president of the city council without even having that documentation, without even demanding it, you know, it's by law you're supposed to have it. And your corporation council, who is supposed to uphold the city charter and the Code of Ordinances, who is the person who defends our laws, defends our cities, and puts forth the laws that we have to abide by, sits here and doesn't even look to say, "Well, there has been a problem with the city charter. What am I gonna do about it?" Do you even have that information to share with us?
Concerning which topic, Legislative Ford?
On the payouts. And with all the time sheets and with everything that was sent to the comptroller. Are you sitting here right now with that information?
I'm sitting here with some of the information I've managed...
You know what, and then...
I just... I just wanna finish my statement. And I believe in the next several weeks, that information is going to be trickling out.
It should not be trickling out. It should be right here, and as God is my witness, I'm going to make sure that I have it. Because I and other people here have put in foil, and since it's been sent to the state comptroller, I should not be denied. You have my foil request. I should be able to have that information in complete, not trickle to me one thing at a time. I just wanna go back to the budget. You had talked about with the daycare. And are you saying that that might be something that you might cut in this year's budget?
No, I was saying that everything comes with a cost, and that's one of the areas where we're losing money.
Okay, oh, I see. And also, I know that you talked about with the fire department. You know, two more seconds, all right? Just two more seconds. I'm just gonna go on to this. But, you know, a couple of years ago, the city paid good money for an ICMA report, which was going to help us, you know, cement and put together our fire department in a more efficient manner and everything like that. And the only thing that the city took out of that was to lay off five guys, you know, five firefighters. You know, they had promised, I think, with that report, that by following their recommendations, you know, we would have been able to keep a complete paid fire department as well as our volunteers. We would have had a fire commissioner who probably could have at this time doubled to our OEM commissioner. And they had estimated that perhaps they would have given us a savings of $2.1 million because they would have been able to help with the manning and the overtime and stuff like that. And I'm just saying that, you know, even when we spend money and when people come in with recommendations, it has been loathsome on the part of the previous administration to follow any type of advice, any type of recommendations. And I know that moving forward, you all have to rebuild trust in this city, because I think it's completely gone. And until you start changing this, you have to start changing everybody's attitude toward this place. Because I'll tell you right now, we're all suffering. And, you know, and I'm glad, though, my last comment is that there will be no layoffs because the workers have suffered enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Please state your name and address.
16 May Walk. I have a question regarding... Actually, it's an answer to your request. You asked people, Anthony, to come down and get budget solutions.
Yeah, people had ideas.
This is not so much a budget solution, but in the presentation over here, I saw that they were discussing the LBGT event that's going on here. In December, I remember Commissioner Tagney saying that they had not fulfilled their obligations. I know last year, their budgeted bill that was sent to them, and it was rather conservative, was $230,000. They got a $150,000 grant, which means that they owed us about the city, not me, they owed the city about $80,000. This year, they're receiving $50,000 grant with no means to pay their bill. And I'm just wondering, why would we continue down the road and make bad decisions and having an event like that take place? We're all for the event taking place. And when you mention, you talk about the polar bears, and you talk about Michelle O'Neill, those are homegrown events that bring a community together and support so many other causes, cancer for cancer, and then so forth and so on. And I'm just wondering why this event is allowed to take place without having any kind of a budget and considering that we're floating into an abyss and with no answers, and yet we're gonna allow them off the hook for $80,000, and then now we're gonna give them another $130,000 pass? That's a lot of money to take into consideration when we have zero.
So no one said they were gonna get a pass. So we've talked to... We've talked to them. They know that whatever their budget is, is what it has to be. We've also spoken to our good friends at the Polar Bear, who agreed that they, from what I understand, who have agreed that, you know, covering the cost of what the city expenses to throw such a large event is a fair thing. So I think all events, paying their fair way.
And I agree with you, and I know that from the chamber, who just did an event, and we paid the city for their efforts and so forth.
The Electric Light Parade would be one, right?
I understand that, too. But my question is, why are they allowed to proceed when they did not pay their obligation from last year?
Well, I don't know that... I don't know that... I don't know that they didn't, but I think...
Commissioner Tagney, in December, you said that they didn't fulfill their total obligation. You didn't give a dollar amount, but you said that they...
At the time, we had our conversation. They may not have paid everything, but I... That wasn't my position of follow-up at the time. I was acting as just the police commissioner.
Oh, no, understood, understood. But my question is, why would we continue unless we know that they actually paid the bill?
But it's all events moving forward, right?
But I don't wanna move forward. We need to collect the money that's owed us, aren't we? Isn't that good governing?
Well, I know the city... The city, yes. And the city did expend a lot of resources in addition to what was originally proposed for the event, because we were expecting large crowds. So we wanted to make sure it was... We wanted to make sure that it was safe and everything was, you know, done in a way that didn't impact the residents so greatly, which turned out to be quite successful.
Correct. But here's the point.
Do you know the amount that it was over?
The point is that there's gonna be the same...
The point is, I don't think it was over $80,000.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe it was over $80,000.
All right, well, I can tell you this, because I was in the meeting when the commissioner had given the estimate of the cost of the event. And they got $150,000...
That's correct.
From an economic development grant, which would have done a lot more for the businesses down here than they did.
But they applied for the state, just like you can, sir.
Granted, they got $150,000, came to the city, and they got paid for that. That leaves $80,000 unaccounted for. Now here we go, forward. Now we're gonna talk, if they only got a $50,000 grant with no means to pay for this, how are they going to... Now we're gonna lose $130,000.
I mean, we've told that... We've told all organizations that we're not...
Mr. Lynch, I have no idea where you got the $238,000 from. That's number one.
Not 230, 230. That was the estimate when I sat in the roundtable, when you were talking to Redland Securities in the city manager's office.
I don't deal in estimates when we're gonna possibly cancel an event or say someone owes money. You can't do it in estimates. So I will look into that issue there, as far as if they owe money. The second part of your point is, we know it's $50,000, so the event has to come in at $50,000. So all the Friday night services that we were gonna provide have already been canceled so far this year. We are meeting this week to talk about the Saturday... Real reduction in the Saturday events and maintaining the Sunday events.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and thank you. My point is, they're not exercising it that way. They're promoting it, and it's gonna be the biggest event ever seen. So I appreciate you saying that. My only point is...
The county has come forward, and the Friday event, I think, is gonna be something at the golf course, to having a golf event. Oh, okay. And Malibu. Oh, okay. And Malibu. So, the town and the county are also getting involved.
We're all for economic development and celebration, and that's fine. But if you're asking the locals that they have to pay their way, then the outside should have to pay their way as well.
Right.
Thank you.
If we're asking people to pay. Please state your name and address.
Kathleen O'Leary, 350 East Market Street, Long Beach. I want to comment about several things. First of all, in terms of the extra $52,000 Jack Schneierman took, I'm going to say, I know that the city charter is written in such a way that the city manager has discretion on those payments. I think that the city charter needs to remove that discretion, okay? I also think it would be an easy solution, maybe I'm being naive about this, but maybe Jack could just give back the $52,000. You know, it's a lot of money, but, you know, there's so much controversy about this. He did get another $50,000 in payout, so why can't you just give back the money? You live here, you're in the county government, you have to deal with all of us. So, that's my point on that.
Ms. O'Leary, before you go on--
Yes, I'm sorry.
The city Code of Ordinances does not give the city manager the latitude to make those decisions.
Oh, okay.
The city manager chose--
Okay.
--to do it.
Okay.
But the Code of Ordinances does not give that latitude. It's very clear what it says.
Okay, thank you. From the last city council meeting, I thought that it did.
That's a narrative that's being fermented to--
Cover up.
To cover people.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. The other thing I want to speak about is the idea of parking meters. I floated this idea in 2011, and it was shot down before Sandy. I get the feeling, from being here a quarter of a century, this city is very, I don't know what the word is, but they don't take advantage of what they have to offer, okay? I think parking meters should be put in all three commercial districts, Lido, the center of town, and the West End. I think we need to step up to the plate and collect what's ours, you know, which is the rent of our parking spaces. I also think that the, what was I going to say? I know we raised the beach fees in previous years. That's pretty high, but it could go higher. Some beaches are charging $30 to come in for the day out east. So, I think we're charging something like 17.
15.
It's probably good for now. The other topic is kind of an ugly one, but I'm going to say it. A lot of the police overtime is due to these events that we host. I'm pretty sure. We incur a lot of overtime. And it's not written anywhere that we have to have Irish Day every year. You know, it's not written every year that we have to do the polar bear plunge. And if we're in fiscal crisis, and we're making the papers, you know, I think we could pull one of those events. I don't know which one, but it's certainly, you know, the police overtime is, I think pulling those events would be a benign denial of police overtime, whereas if there's a big crime going on, I wouldn't want to see police overtime pulled, if you understand my equation. So, that's basically what I have to say.
So, I think with all events, we were talking about moving to a model where whoever's hosting the event pays for their costs, whether it's sanitation, police overtime, whatever it is to make sure it's a safe, clean, fun event for everyone. But that wouldn't be the same for, say, Fall Festival, because that's our event. So, that's something that the council is looking to discuss, for sure.
Oh, so we run it?
Yeah, Fall Festival is our event.
I got you.
So, that would be all our expense.
Yeah, that would be great in this kind of budget environment. Okay, thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Jim Kirkland, Long Beach, New York. Commissioner Tagney had mentioned that somebody was looking into the separation, you know, documents. And I was just curious as to whether or not, then I heard somebody say something that the comptroller might be looking into it. Now, I know the comptroller is pretty busy right now, since a lot has been dumped in his lap. Is he doing both, or are different people doing both things?
I'm not sure, but I will find out tomorrow. And the deputy comptroller, is she?
Okay.
I think you meant the state comptroller, no?
Yeah, yeah, the state comptroller.
Yes, I'm going to find out who sent what to him.
Is there an actual document that we requested?
I don't know yet. I'm going to find out tomorrow, and I will send it out to the council first.
Okay, so we'd be able to get to see the document if it does come in?
I'm sure you will.
Okay, very good. That's basically all I wanted to know. By the way, you looked very, very good. I hope you had a good time on your cruise.
I had a great time.
Good, good. I used to be able to go to those, but now I got to pay for my taxes.
Mr. Seese, I think you went already. I think you went already, Mr. Seese, right?
I would just say--
I think, but I think you went already for the budget.
The Hybernians, the Hybernians put up a lot of money for--
Ms.?
You already had a comment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Seese.
Double the fees on that thing twice a week, Wednesday and Saturday. The guy's making $3,000 a day in Braden.
Michelle Knox, Long Beach.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's past my bedtime, but I want to know, when you guys were all working on the budget, do you have any worksheets of how long you worked on it? Do you have a list of all the temporary salaries, who's getting those salaries, besides, I know the lifeguards are temporary, overtime, listing personnel? Do you have any of that?
I mean, anything--
I did it strictly by categories.
Well, what I also need to know is, do you guys work together to brainstorm on this budget? I mean, if you all work five days a week, Monday through Friday, when do you get together?
It's very difficult.
It's what?
It's very difficult.
Ms. Knox--
Well, do you? Apparently, you don't.
Yes.
There's only a certain amount that they can meet together--
So--
--without violating the open meetings law. The budget was prepared with, by me, with all the department heads. Then I sent it to the council. They're really only supposed to work on the budget in front of the public.
Well, do we, as the public, as taxpayers, who are now going to be stuck paying 12% taxes increase, do we get to see the worksheets for all the employees? Like, who's a patronage position for a summer job, that type of thing?
No.
Because I know I used to get them when I was a kid. So, I know people are still doing that.
Getting what?
Summer hires.
Little summer jobs.
There's a list of, that's on, the personnel report is on file with the clerk's office. It's with the clerk's office. The clerk announces it at the--
Shouldn't it be online?
At the first meeting of every month, I post the city manager's monthly personnel report right over here on the side. So, at the beginning of every month, every change in personnel, hires, fires, everything, is listed on that document.
So, if I looked on that docket, it would be a listing of all the new, or all the temporary salaries--
Ticket takers, all that stuff, yep.
So, and I would have no problem finding that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's my name.
It's my name.
Yeah, it's my name.
It's listed by name and position.
Right.
Eileen Hesch in Long Beach.
Thank you.
I don't know where to begin. Something is wrong here. I had pulled out a lot of things from the budget, but I think John McNally did it better than I did. He had very specific things. I did, too, but I'll just let him have it. But what I keep finding is that you guys don't know what's happening. I mean, Mr. Bendo just brought up something that Mr. Agostisi said, "Yes, we do that," and he showed in the charter that you don't do it. Mr. Arama, when Mrs. Hightower was speaking, and then somebody asked a question, you said, "Well, yes, that's how I heard it tonight." And I thought, "Tonight's the first time you heard it?" I mean, it's always as if you don't know what's going on. The payments, you know, go back to that for a minute. I understand Jack signed yours, Mr. Agostisi. Is that correct?
I don't know, actually.
Oh, okay, you don't know. You got a big raise and a separation pay, and I know that last week you said it was because you had kind of threatened to leave, you were offered another job.
It wasn't, I wouldn't classify it as a threat.
All right, whatever, you know, you were offered another job, and you were going to leave.
Wasn't intended to be coercive in any way.
Okay, so you took the raise, and you got the separation payment, even though you didn't leave. And so, if they had to give you a raise and that big separation payment, how come we use outside counsel so often? You know, every time we have some kind of lawsuit, we're talking about paying other lawyers.
I would say, Ms. Hesch, the vast majority of cases are handled in-house--
Okay, I haven't heard about them, then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The other thing is, the city's mess is not just about that $2 million of separation pay. And, you know, talking about not knowing what's going on, last meeting, Commissioner Tagney found a million dollars. And I'm wondering, how come nobody found that during the year? And why this beautiful thing tonight about, "We're having new ideas now. We're going to get parking meters, and we're going to have police overtime, and we're going to pay for the special things going on." How come you're talking about that the day before the budget is due, and you're not talking about it all year long? Let's have some of these good ideas come out. I have mentioned many times, let's have a citizen committee. We have an awful lot of talented people here who could be giving you these ideas like parking meters in advance of the day before the budget. Also, we've heard many times tonight that we have services that many cities don't have, and I agree with that, and I agree that they're expensive. But I don't think we have to cut those. You already said you can get the police overtime paid for by, you know, polar bear or whoever. That's one way to keep it. The other thing is, instead of taking away, how about taking away some of the jobs that seem to be redundant? For example, if you look at the budget, do you know that beach maintenance has seven superintendents or supervisors? Seven. Do we really need that? So does sanitation, seven. Also, look at the recreation department, the city manager's office. There is so much redundancy there, and they're not making $10 an hour. They're making $80, $150,000 a year. I'm afraid, I'm finishing with this sentence. I'm afraid that once the budget is passed, and the $2 million is yesterday's news, you're going to go back to the way that things have been. And what I want is a guarantee that we're going to be looking more fiscally at the budget from day one after this budget passes, and that you'll have a nonpartisan citizen committee to help you, as you had asked for help, Mr. Arama.
Ms. Hesch, just to speak to the million dollars that the commissioner found, it wasn't actual dollars that he found. It was bonds that we had already floated, that we didn't maximize. So, there was other money to borrow without us having to vote to borrow. So, we just borrowed more money. We just didn't have to vote to do it, that's all.
Keep looking.
But it's still borrowed money. It's still, it's not like found money, you know, we found a bag in the corner. It's still borrowed, is my point. Name and address, sir?
Good evening again, Jay Gosla. I see, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, $1.8 million budgeted for termination salaries in the proposed budget? All right, well, let's assume that's correct. A meeting or two ago, I raised the subject to you guys of unbonded debt, which is accrued time owed to the city's workforce. And I asked whether or not anybody had any kind of handle on a dollar figure for that. And you guys all gave me the same kind of blank stares you're giving me now. Have you, in intervening weeks, looked into this at all? Do we have any kind of grasp on what kind of unbonded debt we have in the form of time owed to city workers?
No.
Okay. So, that $1.8 million, who knows how many people could leave in this coming year? They could be owed $5 million, they could be owed $20 million, they could be owed $50 million.
I mean, if you look at the trend, it was $5 million, what, five or six years ago, and it's gone steadily down from there. But yes, it is an estimate.
So, you don't think it would--
Mr. Gosla, if I could?
Yeah, sure.
During the budget process, each department head is asked to inquire in their department if anyone is anticipating leaving. Now, granted, someone could say no and still go, or say yes and not go, but that's how we project the $1.8, based on what we believe, what's already gone, the people that are already gone and still owed money, and are taking biweekly payouts, plus people that have made intentions known that they would be leaving in this year, and how the payments would be structured.
Understood. But you also have situations like a city manager who ran for higher office and won, and there was a sudden potential exodus of city workers, who clearly did not inform their department head at the beginning of the year that they planned on going anywhere. So, it would be good practice for the city to at least have a handle on what kind of dollar figure we're talking about. It's out there. It's not hypothetical. It's out there. It's a calculation that could be made, if you guys are willing to do it. But that aside, I've, since that meeting, learned about something that is referred to as due time, D-U-E-time. Can anybody tell me if they're familiar with that? You're not familiar with it? Mr. Agostisi, you're exempt, correct? Are you familiar with due time?
There's nothing. No.
Well, let me tell you what it is. It's comp time. It's comp time. The problem is that it's earned by exempt employees. And you shaking your head and denying you've heard the term? I'm going to call you a liar. I'm going to call you a liar, Mr.--
I've never, I've never had comp time since I've been the police commissioner, nor city manager.
And you've never--
Not one minute.
And you've never heard of due time in your 40 years working for the city of Long Beach? You've never heard the term due time?
No, I haven't heard that. I've heard due time outside of the city--
Well, let me tell you what it is. It's a practice by exempt city workers, including some in this very administration, and I'm sure some sitting on this dais, to take what is in effect the functional equivalent of comp time, even though the charter prohibits them from taking comp time. It's a form of time that they track themselves. They do not report it to payroll. And then what they do is, they take that time off at the time of their choosing, which allows them to take unrecorded, undocumented time off. Now, when Mr. Schneierman got paid for more than the full complement of time that he was entitled to pursuant to his banks, despite having taken virtually the entire last year of his service off the campaign, I was perplexed as to how that could happen. Then somebody told me about due time. Due time is, it's a crime. You guys have exempt workers who are putting themselves in, saying that they were there when they weren't there, and they're keeping their own personal book of this due time, and taking it off at the time of their choosing. That you guys are going to sit there and deny that you know about this is astonishing to me. You're going to have to answer for it eventually.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on the budget?
Do I leave the hearing open?
I have to. Right, okay. All right, we're going to move to the next item.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. Item one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application on behalf of the city of Long Beach to the New York State Financial Restructuring Board to perform a comprehensive review of the city's finances, financial practices, and operations.
This is one of the things that people have been speaking about quite a bit tonight, that we are looking to have the state come in with their financial restructuring board. This was an idea that was arrived at by Senator Kaminsky, and they will review all of our city finances, financial practices, and operations, and hopefully give us best practices going forward.
So, I guess just the thing that I would like to say is, because I think all the whole council here looked into this a little bit, and so did our Corporation Council, it's basically up to $5 million. And the way it seems to work is, the state will give us some practices or ideas, whether it's two, three, four, five, or six, as they've done in other communities. You can look it up online. I think that's what we all did. And they just give you an idea. You should consolidate this and this, and if you do that, we'll give you $200,000. And they just list out some general ideas for, I think, better, more efficient government. And if you follow them, they give you an amount per idea. So, that's basically what it is in a nutshell. Anyone from the council have any questions?
No, I would just want to just echo and just add one other thing that is critical for people to understand, that it's not binding, being that these are just mere suggestions.
Good point.
I think that's important for the public to know.
So, it doesn't cost us anything. They can look and give us some ideas. So, we're willing to take the help, and we thank Senator Kaminsky for pointing us in that direction. Any questions from the public? Sir?
John Ashmead, 38 East Beach Street, Long Beach. Just a couple of questions on that. One, you have to submit an application for that, is that correct?
Yes.
When do you intend to submit that application?
Probably later this week.
This week?
It's due sometime in May, so--
And do you have to request anything specifically, other than just asking them to come in and review, or do you ask them to look at specific things?
You invite them off to the door, you tell them you want.
And they refer to it as a comprehensive review, so it's everything.
Are they going to investigate the separation payouts, and whether they're proper?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. I believe that's in the purview of the state comptroller. That's my sense.
Okay. And the state comptroller has been asked to investigate the payouts in their propriety?
Yes, they've--
Well, just to investigate it. I make no assumptions.
All right. But I think Acting City Manager Tagney said that he was going to publicize whatever the letter was to the comptroller, I think you said earlier. A response to a question, a request for what you want the comptroller to do?
No, I said that whatever was mailed from our comptroller to the state, I would provide the council tomorrow. I'll find out who sent--
And have you provide the council, and then to the public?
That's the council's decision.
Okay. And it will have a request specifically for an investigation, because I understand the comptroller doesn't do investigations, it does audits. And if you're leaving it to the comptroller to do the investigation, we ought to make sure that that's within the comptroller's jurisdiction, and it understands what it's being asked to do.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions about the FRB or comments? Seeing none, next item. Oh, wait, sorry. Come on up. This is about the financial review board.
Right, the suggestions that they may come in and give the council--
Oh, sorry.
Sarah, Long Beach, New York, Sarah Modenesi. The suggestions that they bring in, will the--
The suggestions that they bring in, will the residents be able to see their own suggestions also, or will it only be for the council to look over?
I don't see why that document wouldn't be public.
Okay. Why it wouldn't be? Or why it wouldn't--
Yes, it'll be public documented.
It will be public.
I don't see why it wouldn't be.
Okay, thank you.
I believe the agency itself makes it public. The state agency, the FRB, makes it public.
Actually, you can search them online now and see what they recommended to other municipalities. So they're going to post it on their website as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, next item.
Item two is a local law amending subpart C of related acts relating to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section 3C. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item three is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse. This item is a publication only. A hearing will be held June 5th at 7:00 PM. Now, on to the voting portion. Item one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application on behalf of the city of Long Beach to the New York State Financial Restructuring Board to perform a comprehensive review of the city's finances, financial practices, and operations. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendow.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Just wanted to express my thanks to Senator Kaminsky for providing this very, I want to say thoughtful option, and I hope that we move forward with this option as soon as possible, and I vote yes.
Vice President Diamond.
I'll echo what Councilwoman Moore said. I want to thank Senator Kaminsky for bringing this idea to us, and I look forward to seeing the suggestions and the recommendations, and I vote yes.
President Arama.
Yes.
Item two is a local law amending subpart C of the related acts relating to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section 3C. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendow.
Sorry, folks, there's no getting around this one. Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
I agree with Councilmember Bendow. I think nobody wants to vote for this type of item, but unfortunately, we want to maintain the standard of living and the lifestyle that we have here in Long Beach, and this year, this is something that we'll have to do. And I vote yes.
President Arama.
Yes.
And finally, item three is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendow.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Arama.
Yes.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
I'll second. Councilwoman Moore made the motion. I'll second.
More, Diamond.
Voting, Councilmember Bendow.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Arama.
Yes. Council's going to take a five-minute recess.
There really wasn't.
It literally was like straight from the bottom.
She was pouring the salt.
Anything so we can stay alive.
Lucy Centeno.
Boy, did this place empty out. Lucy Centeno, Long Beach. At the last council meeting, the audience was told to come up with ideas to save or make money. Some of these are being repetitive, but just let me say it. One suggestion was to have the parking meters. I went through Long Beach, metered parking from Washington Boulevard and Park to Monroe and Park, then from Neptune and Roosevelt on Park. All parking medians to be metered as well. Also, along Reverend J.J. Evans, facing south, stopping at East Fulton Street. Those are the residence and the church. Stop buying flowers and plants. Allow our residents to beautify our malls their way. However, grass cutting should be continued. The only thing that should be purchased by the city is our Christmas tree. Number three, cut your salary in half to give back the days' pay hourly workers had to give up. Five days for four days' pay. That sucks.
They didn't give, nothing's been given up. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay. And I wanted to know if you would do that on your day job, you know, work five days and only get paid for four. Then stop allowing personal cars to be gassed up at the bus garage.
That should--
Can't tell me it doesn't happen, because I've seen it. All city vehicles should be parked at the end of the business day, except for fire and police. Boot cars that have three or more tickets. We have tow trucks, use them instead of outside companies, and store them on Long Beach property. All fees will come to Long Beach. Let the bottled water go. Fill pitchers with water from the dispensers in the building. Or here's an idea. Drink water from the faucet. Put it in pitchers and pour it in cups. Mr. Mooney had a lot to say about Mr. Bendow and Ms. Moore last time. I see him as a bully. He didn't help the manual hourly workers. He used them. So did this council, with the exception of the two above mentioned, Mr. Bendow and Ms. Moore. Threatening people's jobs is a very old tactic used by bullies. To threaten our paid fire department and police department is simply a scare tactic to this city. It's old news, it's been done before. By the way, why give payouts to employees still employed? And why can't you get the $53,000 overpayment back from Jack? He wants a reason to give it back? He's not entitled to it. The other thing is, Mr. Tagney left, but I wanted to let him know that, by the way, you know I'm not happy how my daughter's murder was carried out, how the investigation was never handled? And it's like, what's going on now? It's business as usual. Whatever happens, happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. O'Leary? Thank you.
I wanted to speak about civil service in Long Beach. And I had no idea other people were going to speak in such detail, and I can't speak in detail like that, but I really feel like the moving of an exempt employee over to civil service was a sleight of hand. If you notice, I think it's Saladino, did something similar in his district as he was leaving. There's kind of been a cloud over Long Beach civil service for decades. I would like to see it handled in the way that Nassau County and Suffolk County handle it, which includes exams, lists, and controls over the lists. There's no reason that you should be able to skip the test, skip the list, and get a secure, high-paying position with good benefits. So in the future, there needs to be some oversight on how, is this being handled as a political goodie, or is it being handled fairly, which I believe Nassau County does? I don't really know, but it seems much more fairly run in Nassau County than it does in Long Beach. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Knox? I think she's left. Karen Adamo?
I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Adamo. Mary Volosevich? I don't see her. Eileen Heschman? Mike Delory? Patrick Arcis? Mr. Jay Gussler? John McNally?
I'm here. Waiting for a favor from Bendow. Don't make that wait. So, and I actually would have passed, but Acting Commissioner Tagney gave me the perfect opportunity for follow-up when he said that there's only so much of the budget that the council can discuss without violating open meeting laws. Actually, you guys can have an open meeting and not violate open meeting laws. For six years now, the city council has been constructed or construed of one political party, and has yet to have one public open meeting. I would really love to see you guys have a working, open working meeting, and I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Norrie Egan? Thank you. Mr. Ashmead?
John Ashmead, 38 East Beach Street, Long Beach. Rise just on a couple of things. First, I want to be very clear. I want nothing more than for you people to be on my side, on the taxpayer and the resident's side. I don't want you to fail. I voted for you the first time. Voted for your, I think I voted for Mr. Mandell, who's not here tonight. I'm a Democrat. When I see people crapping all over Democrats when they're referring to you, it annoys me. I try not to get on their Facebook. To me, it's a local thing. The thing that's incredibly frustrating is, we are neighbors, often friends. Our kids play together, and it's so frustrating when you feel like you're being sandbagged and foot dragged. For you guys not to have looked at the vouchers, which are at the center of this, for over a month since it first came up is just astounding to me. As I said it the first time it came up, I didn't do any of the calculations. I don't know anything was proper. It's come up. Let's get it out. If they were proper, we may not like it that Jack could get this much money, or Mr. Agostis or whatever. It is what it is. Let's get it out. It's the lack of transparency, transparency, which makes me sick to my stomach as I drive. This is a, it's not just that it's a small town, small town that's tight, because we're a barrier island, we're different than other places. I've lived in other places. You see people so much more around here. It's a much more social atmosphere. It's just sickening. You feel like your neighbors are screwing you, and you feel that way when they don't give the answers. If Jack did something wrong, let's investigate. If he didn't, get it out there. But when you duck and say you haven't looked at a voucher in 30 days, how can that be? Mr. Robinson may have had full authority to sign that. I have no idea. Investigate it yourselves. Determine whether it's proper or not. If it was improper, determine what the results of that should be or the consequences, and say to people that's what it is. If you think you're incompetent on some of the things, bring in an outsider. I'm skeptical that the New York State Comptroller is going to investigate this stuff unless you specifically ask it, but if you do, get it out there. Say, "We specifically asked for an investigation for a prop one." That will restore some trust and get rid of the animosity. That's the part that's so difficult. Make one more point, skipping to the budget. I said it before, I don't want to be in your seat. It's a terrible seat. And for all those people who say you should take a pay cut, I'm not going to get personal here. I wouldn't do the job for the amount of money you guys got paid and the heat that you take. So I understand it's difficult. But I do think it's very difficult to make those budget cuts on an item-by-item basis, because, again, you might be affecting directly a neighbor or friend. It's our benefit and our burden. The benefit of this community and so many of our workers living in this community is you think they're going to have extra pride, and they do, and they go that extra mile and do wonderful things for Long Beach. On the other hand, the burden is, they're your friends and neighbor when you think they're not doing a great job or they're not needed. It's very difficult to get rid of them, or cut services, et cetera. It's crazy, but it's not that crazy. I think austerity budgets say every department, 5% or 10%, or whatever, or all, and that's it, you know? And that may make things rough on residents. And suppose, in a year, we could look at it and see where we are, and you guys don't have to, if you can't, make these sort of line items if it's too difficult, and I'd recommend you think on that. Thank you.
So I'll just speak for myself for a second in terms of investigating the payout. So for me, there's, just like for you, there's no way for me to know if this was calculated properly. The numbers that are being thrown out there, there's no way for me to know. So for me, I personally called Tom DiNapoli myself. I spoke to him at least, I think it's three times now in the past five weeks or so, and asked him to investigate it. And that's what I did. So any time that I've had that's free, and I'm not speaking for anyone, I'm just speaking for myself, has been spent looking at the budget, trying to figure out where overruns are, talking to President Mooney, where he thinks we can cooperatively, you know, cut things. Kenny Apple from the PBA has been forthcoming, and I've had many conversations with him. Mike Tagney, the DPW commissioner, has ideas for sanitation. So any time I've had, I've spent on that, because this has already been investigated. So, you know, maybe shame on me for not having 40 hours in the day, but I think my role right now, most vital role I have and I see, is the budget.
If I could just respond to that. No, we're begging you. Pounding and pounding and pounding. I can't do anything different. Why don't you--
I'm answering--
I want to say I appreciate that you don't have, I don't, I wasn't saying you personally should spend the rest of your life. I know you have a job. What I'm saying is, but you manage people. You manage Mr. Agostis, you manage other people, and say, "Get to the bottom of this. Pull the payment vouchers. Can you give us your view? We've looked at, we've looked at the time sheets, and give me your view, and if you need separate advice to go over it,"
Right.
"That's what I'm, I don't expect Anthony Arama to be doing."
But to be fair, Mr. Agostis keeps coming up because he did receive a payment, so it's not appropriate for him to look into it.
I understand, that's where one where you may want to go, but--
So like, where do we go from here? I went to the New York State Comptroller.
If I can just also respond to what you said, you had asked a question. I, just to kind of add, I think there are only a certain number of hours in a day. I'm not an expert on payouts. I'm not a mathematician. To me, when we referred this and asked for an audit of it, audit, investigation, whatever language you want to call it, I'm not a comptroller, so I don't know the specific language, the we, for me, I wanted an independent person, not working for the city. You just mentioned, we're all very close, everybody lives in this neighborhood. We wanted someone who isn't here, who isn't impacted, who doesn't sit next to the person who signed off on something, who doesn't have any kind of interest, so to speak, in this. And to me, that was why, and I agree with President Arama, that I kind of just, we've been focusing on the budget, to the extent that we've had any free time, we've either done conference calls or meetings, or whatever it is that we can do, to best understand this, and we left it to, right or wrong, we left it to an independent auditor who isn't invested here and isn't interested here to do an analysis. And when we find out, or if we find out that the number is inappropriate, then we'll determine what action we can take at that point, once the audit is complete. But the audit should, in my opinion, be done by somebody who isn't sitting here, who isn't friends with anybody, who doesn't know anybody independent, like, completely independent. We looked for someone who wasn't connected to anybody.
And I appreciate that. I still think you should have done something, but I'd just say, the May comptroller letter said he was not asked by the city to investigate the separation payouts. So if it has been, let's just make sure that's clear, and it has, because that's my concern. I hear what you're saying, whether I agree with you or not. I hear what you're saying, but if it's actually not being done, that's a problem, and we ought to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. And to be clear, he just reminded me that he is, he is looking into everything, right? Is that right? So I misspoke. So, I misspoke, to the extent that he can, he is, but, so I just wanted to be clear on that. Mr. Kirkland?
Jim Kirkland, Long Beach, New York. Just to add to Mr. Ashmead's comment about how to deal with restaffing, you know, the administration, I've been in touch with a number of accountants, and they've all looked at the budget, and to a person, they've all just, their first comment was, "This is bloated. This whole administration is just so bloated." So, the need to cut is definitely warranted, and I can understand the difficulty of just doing it on a line-item basis, but as Mr. Ashmead suggested, doing it on perhaps a departmental basis would make it a little simpler. Because one of the things that this city, you know, tends to carry forward with it from year after year is that it's a family and friends employment service. I mean, that seems to be the way everybody gets promoted and moved to new positions, because it's a dyed-in-the-wool patronage system, and to the extent that it was done as a study by a Pennsylvania State University, because they found Long Beach was the perfect city to do that kind of an analysis and case study on. So it goes beyond our borders, but I think the people in this town feel the same way, that, you know, it's not what you know, or what you've done, but who you know, and who's gonna get you there. And until that changes, you're not gonna get quality people, because a lot of the people that are in positions of power really don't have any basis for being there, because they have no experience or training for it. And to expect them to give you good, sound, you know, reasonable answers for certain questions is unjustified, because they don't have the capability or the training to be able to do that sort of thing. So I think everything needs to be changed, not just in terms of how we respond to one another, but in terms of how you just staff this. I have another friend who was brought in as a consultant to study the civil service procedures in this town, and he said they were just a joke, they violated just about all the rules that existed when it came to moving people around. And so, I just spoke to him two weeks ago, and he says, "It's just absurd, the way things are run here." So I think, you know, a lot of things need to be looked at, and perhaps the FRB will, if that's the proper--
The Review Board.
If that's the proper term, they will be able to, you know, straighten things out and get us running on an even keel. You know, because I think everybody wants that, and it's just that we seem to be at lagerheads with each other, and that's unfortunate and unnecessary also. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for this evening. Everyone, please get home safe.